Welcome, everyone. I call the June 28th, 2022 regular city council meeting to order. I will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody else, please mute your microphones and turn off your videos. While we play the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. The City of Bothell's proclamation of extension of local emergency is in effect, therefore this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the City Clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz.
Here.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Councilmember Manke.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, city clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or your yellow card when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. Be clearly and pause frequently, and remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing no hands, I will move on to presentations, reports, and briefings. This is one I've been waiting for for a long time. No offense, Erin. I know you've been waiting for a long time as well. We get to welcome our new city manager, Kyle Standard. And we're, one last time in this section of the agenda, I am going to call on interim city manager Lenhart to introduce city manager. Standard, can we have an interim city manager and a city manager at the same time? Is that a thing?
I just don't think that there's enough letter space for former interim city manager slash public works director.
That's fair. That's fair. Well, either way, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, mayor. Good evening, council. It is my great pleasure to introduce and welcome city manager Kyle Standard to the City of Bothell. Those watching may not know that he comes to us most recently from Fort Collins, Colorado, where he served as deputy city manager. City manager Standard is not new to our community. Prior to his time in Colorado, he lived just north of our city limits while he served as an assistant city manager at the City of Bellevue. City staff are really excited our new leader is here, and I think no more than I am. And with that, I would like to hand it over to you, Mr. City Manager.
Well, thank you, Erin, and just want to take one more opportunity, and I'll take two more after that. So thank you for your leadership during this interim period. I know everyone on this meeting and those who have worked with you in the community are grateful for you being willing to step up and step in to the interim role and also just for your clarity of where you wanted to be at the end of this process. And I'm really, I'm thankful that you get that opportunity to and to unplug. Have a few weeks, we won't see you for a few weeks, but I know we'll have you back on a council meeting or two to present. And to the council, mayor, deputy mayor, city council members, thank you very much. I just want to express tonight how grateful I am for the opportunity to serve as the city manager of Bothell. I don't, I don't take that lightly. And I also recognize for the community members who are watching tonight, really right now, all anybody knows about me is my resume has been posted. There was a public interview that people may have caught once or twice, depending on, you know, how much, how much they wanted to tolerate. But people just know me from what they've read or seen on paper. And I'm really looking forward to being able to just build some relationships by doing work together. And I know that some of that will be here on Tuesday nights, how, how we work together, both the staff and the city council. So with that, I caveat, I'm also thankful that you gave me an opportunity to have a week under my belt before the first meeting. Although I was kind of like thinking it might be interesting to have a first day council meeting too to see what I could, what I could get wrong. But I think I'll, now, now it'll be a full on mistake, not just that I didn't vote. So, so thank you for that. I've used that time to really start getting to know some of the ELP members as we prepare to co-lead the organization together and on the day to day basis. And also being able to meet with each of you on, on city council and build that relationship too. So all of this is going to start coming together. We're, we've got some great opportunities to do that. We have the Fourth of July coming up. We have some Friday nights to celebrate being in Bothell together, and I'm looking forward to that. And then on Tuesday nights, we're going to have a lot of budget conversations, which we get to just start tonight as well. So with that, I want to just again say thank you. I want to also note to any staff who are watching. Really just one week in, haven't been able to connect with everybody yet, but I am making rounds to staff meetings and looking forward to, to meeting everybody here too. And just finally to the mayor and the city council, again, I'm honored to be your city manager. We talked a lot through this process about the importance of positive relationship and collaborating and really working on big challenging things. We're not always going to all agree. But the best thing I just want to reiterate is just the, the solid understanding that is, as your city manager, that I know that you're looking to me to implement policy and to lead the organization day to day. And again, I'm really, really fortunate to have a fabulous team of executive leaders to work with. And I'm really excited to get to work with this council. And soon we'll have, have one more to really set some exciting and policy direction for the, to make Bothell better and better. So can't wait to get to work and let's do that tonight.
Well, Kyle, thank you. We're all super happy you're here. And Erin, I know I've said this before, but like I have one last time in a meeting in this part to just say thank you. Like it's become really apparent over the last year and a half, why staff was so hopeful that you would have the interim role back when we were making that decision. And I just want to say thank you for, for keeping the lights on. I know we weren't always easy. It wasn't always easy. You came in at a heck of a time. It was not a simple task. So just thank you again. I hope you enjoy your vacation. I'm going to assume that you're not going to be reachable by phone. And, and we'll, we'll be excited to have you back and we'll see you here in a different role. All right, I am moving on to.
Well, and actually, mayor, if I, so if new guy privilege, if I could have one quick update too. I mentioned adding another staff member, and I just wanted to, for clarity, both for, for the council members tonight, but also for any community members who are, are thinking maybe they want a role change too. I just wanted to put out a reminder that this Friday is the deadline to apply for the vacant council member seat, council position number six. There is information on our website. And then I know there's also interest on, well, what happens next? And so the high level is that, just as a reminder, once the application period closes, we'll know the total number. And really the hinge point for us is if we end up with more than six, or as I might say, seven or more applicants. The plan is to meet next Tuesday night for the council to be able to review the candidates and also agree on some process of looking at who to bring forward for interviews and what that might look like. And then we will also spend time on the 12th doing the quick math to, for interviews as well. So that's the plan. Right now we have, we, we're not quite at that seven candidate list, but I think it's pretty reasonable to think that we will be. And then if there are any questions tonight, we do have our fabulous city clerk, Laura Hathaway is here, and Paul Byrne, our city attorney is here. And case council members do have questions, but if not, we can go on with the show.
And they're both unmuted, which makes me think they might have something to say.
No, I'm, I'm just jealous that I didn't get called fabulous, but that, I'll let that slide. He's new.
I've known Laura longer.
No, Kyle said everything. We were just going to go through the process. If there are seven or more, then we will be, we will need to meet on July 5th. With the way I envisioned this is that we would start with public comment and then go into executive session to discuss each of the candidates. We would then return to the public forum and each of, then the council would decide how they want to advance people to the interview phase. That would be a discussion among council as to how they want to do that process. Then after they've decided on that process, you would then make nominations and those people would eventually be invited. Councilmembers Zornz.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that if we do meet next week, the option is to be in council chambers. Is that correct? Okay. Great. Thank you.
All don't ever change. Okay.
I'll try not to.
I appreciate you. All right, I am going to move on to council committee reports. Council members, are there any committee reports? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on to visitor comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. City clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We had one written comment submitted this evening from John and Annette Loy regarding the use of signage to inform the public about illegal fireworks. I did not receive any request to speak live this evening. However, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to do so at this time, please use the raise hand function and we will panel you in to speak. So I'll give them a minute to do that. I will say our timer is not working again. So if anybody does, we will only go back to using my clock on my phone. I am not at this time seeing anybody who's wishing to raise their, wishing to speak.
Perfect. Thank you, city clerk. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda if somebody is willing. Deputy mayor.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Alderks.
A second.
All right, I have a motion on the floor from deputy mayor Al Cabra and a second from council member Alderks to approve the consent, consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember Manke.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Fantastic. All right, moving on to our first agenda bill of the evening, we have agenda bill 22097 to consider approval of right of way plan for Meridian Avenue South and 240th Street Roundabout Project. Ooh, actually, we have two items that are going to be presented together. The second one is going to be agenda bill 22098, consideration of adoption of ordinance relating to the acquisition by eminent domain of property necessary for the Meridian Avenue South and 240th Street Roundabout Project. And we have senior capital project engineer Yongqing Zhu to present and entertain council questions.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson and the members of the city council. My name is Yongqin Zhu. I am the project engineer for the 240th Streets Southeast and the Meridian Avenue South Roundabout Project. Because the two agenda bills are related, I will provide one presentation. Think this may help in providing better continuity in describing the entire right of way acquisition process. I'm going to share a screen for. Is everybody able to see the screen? Okay, good. So here is an overview of the roundabout project. As shown in the plan, the project will construct a traffic roundabout at the intersection of 240th Street Southeast and the Meridian Avenue Southeast. The improvements will include curb ramps, sidewalk, crosswalks, signage, drainage system, and the street illuminations. The project identified in the Basel's comprehensive plan and will improve the safety, capacity, and the traffic flow at the intersection. The project is a federal funded and administered through the Washington State Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program. Currently, the project has completed 30% design and the construction is anticipated to begin in summer 2023. And tonight's first agenda, agenda bill item is requesting for approval of right of way plan in order to proceed the right of way phase of the project. The first step in the right of way acquisition process for the council is to approve the right of way plan. This provides staff the approval necessary to start the actual right of way discussion with property owners. In this process, staff shares the right of we needs. By the time staff has worked to try to minimize my, the impacts as much as possible while still meet the project needs. Based on the 30% design, it is determined that there, there are five residential properties at the intersection of Meridian Avenue Southeast at South and 240th Street Southeast that require partial takes or temporary construction easement to allow for construction of the proposed roundabout with a two foot wide buffer and a five foot wide sidewalk. The areas of right of way takes are, as shown in orange hatched area in the map. So you can see to the northwest corner of the intersection, there will be approximate 86 square foot land needs to be acquired. This is a common tract owned by a homeowners association. And then to the northeast corner, there will be approximately 877 square foot land needs to be acquired from a vacant land. To the southeast corner, a portion of the fence will be, on the property will be removed for a temporary construction easement. However, it will be restored and replaced in kind. The most significant impact to the property is on the southwest, southwest corner, which is in order to build the sidewalk. The need for the acquisition is about 956 square foot, but will not including removal of trees or other significant landscaping and will be replaced with franchise improvements, including sidewalks. In order to maintain the schedule and secure the maximum amount of federal construction funds in spring 2023, staff must acquire right of way by the end of this year, which means the city will be eligible for 100% federal funds for the construction phase of the project. Or it will receive only 90% of the federal funds. Approval of the right of way will allow the city to proceed the acquisition of properties and easements. And next is the second agenda bill items that is requesting for consideration for adoption of an ordinance related to right of way acquisitions in the event right of way negotiations to purchase those properties are not agreeable to either party. Although staff is asking for condemnation or sorority, it does not mean it will start now. Request for approval is done to allow the project to maintain a reasonable schedule in the event negotiation are not successful. Upon approval of the right of way plan, the city will follow federal requirements as outlined in the Washington State Department of Local Agency Manual for Acquisition Process, which will include prepare land appraisal and administrative offer summary by an experienced and qualified appraiser and consultant. The city will then review and approval of the appraisal and the offer package. Upon approval of the offer package, the city will use qualified consultant negotiator to start negotiations. During the negotiation, a diary must be maintained for each parcel of suitable description of each contract or each contact and the information concerning this function. If negotiations are successful, the city will confirm that if the action is in public interest. Once this is determined, the city will then approve administrative settlements to complete negotiation. The city will exhaust all reasonable efforts to reach a negotiated agreement with owners during the process. However, if agreement cannot be reached in a reasonable time period, condemnation provides a process by which the city can proceed with the project. While the federal requirements call for a minimum of three significant contacts and 30 days are required for following federal and state requirements. Please note that those are absolutely minimal. Also, significant contact means essentially offers and counter offers. In other words, including dialogues, not just notifications. Also, starting the condemnation process does not mean stopping negotiations. The city continues to work for a negotiated agreement even while all the paperwork is being processed. And the process can take months, so there is a significant more time available for negotiations to continue while this occurs. The city, however, cannot afford to wait too long to start proceeding due to lengths of time it could take to work through the entire condemnation process. Furthermore, state law requires the adoption of this ordinance in order for a seller to receive an exercise tax exemption. In fact, a condemnation ordinance is not a legal action to take the property. Our city attorney, Paul Byrne, will provide more explanations regarding condemnation process after my presentation. To conclude my, to conclude my presentation, approval of, approval of the right of we plan and the condemnation ordinance are important to keep the federal fund project moving forward and build the proposed improvements so that improve, improving the safety for general public on the roads and the childrens who needed to walk to the nearby school. I appreciate your consideration and I will be happy to answer questions you may have regarding this matter. Next, I will hand this off to Paul.
Thank you, Yongqin. And so just to kind of jump off of what Yongqin said, the condemnation process, the ordinance that we're asking you to approve tonight along with the right of way plan does not initiate the condemnation action. The condemnation, the ordinance is a requirement, as Yongqin said, to start the process. And if you'll notice in the proposed ordinance, section four talks about the authority of the attorney. And it says the city attorney and anyone else retained for prosecution of this condemnation action is directed to exhaust reasonable efforts through direct negotiations. And the reason we do that stems from the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution against illegal search and seizure without just compensation. And that's one thing that we really try to do. And I understand that the, the amount of land that we're asking the, the property owners to give up is relatively small, but it is still property and we don't want to be flippant about that. And so we do approach them with a lot of respect and humility that this is, as Yongqin said, a project that really is for the benefit of the public, would increase traffic flow. But there is that sacrifice from those property owners where we take a small portion of their property, compensate for them for it. But then move on with the, the benefit to the public of the increased traffic flow. But I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns any of the council members have on that issue.
Deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Yongqin and Paul for the presentation. I appreciate it. I've mentioned before, just fundamentally, I'm, I don't, I don't like, you know, this, it, it sounds very serious to say condemnation and eminent domain and just go grab that property and it will give you a few, you know, a few dollars, I guess, compensation type thing. Sounds, that's like, sounds very extreme to me, just given my background. And I'm glad that you clarified that this is an absolute last action, last resort we will take. I am concerned though, because we are on such tight timeline that we are going to get to this absolute last resort. And then we're going to end up actually, you know, invoking this eminent domain. So I, how are we going to ensure that?
Yeah, so I mean, so I've been with the city since May of 2008, and I've been the city attorney since roughly May of 2016. During my tenure as city attorney, there's not been a single condemnation action that has actually gone to condemnation. I believe there was one back in 2009 or 2010 that I wasn't really involved with. And that was one of the few times that we actually had to go to a condemnation action that, that went to trial. And the court then determined it was a jury that the compensation that was offered by the city was too little. But other than that, in every other instance, we've been able to reach an agreement with the property owner. And as I said earlier, it is very important to us that people understand that this isn't just the city coming in and saying, hey, we like that, so we, we're going to take it. It really is for a specific project that's part of the comprehensive plan that council has already approved. And that we are making sure that people feel like they are being compensated justly. If this were to go to a formal condemnation action, there is always into King County Superior Court or Snohomish County Superior Court. There is a judge and a jury process to make sure that both parties have the opportunity to be heard. And then you have a neutral arbiter make that determination of what that just compensation is. And so even if it goes to that last resort, there are still protections to make sure that property owners' rights are properly protected.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it is very, very rare that we actually go to a condemnation action.
And the, just for my, my own education also, why? Or has any conversation started with the property owners on this? Are we waiting till after this meeting and the pre approvals before we saw the compensation?
I will have to let Yongqin answer that. I don't know the answer to that question.
We, we haven't started any conversation with the property owners, but we did send out a notification letter to let them know that the city is going to have a right of way like a takes or required from their property.
And how, how long ago was, were those letters sent?
We sent it twice, like the first, first letter was sent about two months ago. And the second letter was sent about months ago.
Okay, and we haven't heard anything from the owners, I assume.
No, we haven't heard anything.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmembers Zornz.
Yeah, thank you, Paul and Yongqin. That was a good presentation. I hope my questions are staying as close to topic as possible. I got a chance to listen to some of the open house presentation and I even went over to when there was an interpreter for Chinese and Spanish, I think it was. And it was fascinating to hear that being interpreted at the same time. I'd be curious at another date to know if that was attended to by people who listened to it through the whole way through or who, who needed that as a useful tool and weren't just curious like me, listening to it. But it was, it was great to have that available for folks. I do have a couple of questions on the, the crosswalks. Do they put flashing lights when people are using anything that gives an extra visual? I can see people coming out of that, that intersection and trying to get on the, the road that they're turning on to and not necessarily being prepared for people in crosswalks. Is there a way to do a visual for drivers to know that? Is there a way to do a visual for drivers to know that somebody's in the crosswalk?
Well, we talked this, had a discussion with our consultant, design consultant regarding whether a flashing beacon is needed at the crosswalk. And then the answer is not, it's typically not for a single link roundabout to, to provide a flashing beacon because the crosswalk is kind of sitting like put behind the, the travel lane. It's, it's in the, there's also there is island to, for pedestrian to wait in the middle. So therefore, it is kind of, should be enough, safe enough for the pedestrian to cross the walk.
Okay, I guess my only concern is that a lot of children will be using that crosswalk and do we need an extra safeguard for them as they're going down to Shelton View? But, and then the other question is, in the negotiations, I was looking at the property on the southwest corner, cars going and doing, doing their turns in the roundabout. That piece of property is going to now have headlights at night that would be swooping through. Would the city be offering landscape buffers for that or would that be on them to put as a buffer for lights at night?
And that we, we, we haven't, we, it's not determined yet. We probably will have some discussion with the design consultant to see if that's a landscaping is necessary at this location.
Okay.
And councilmembers Orange, that's part of the negotiation.
Perfect. I, I assumed it was.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for this. I'm really excited to see roundabouts coming into Bothell. So, great presentation and it'll be fun to see this project come, come together. Thank you.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember McNeil, I saw your hand up for a little bit. Did you change your mind?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, most of my questions actually were answered by councilmember Zornz's questions, so. But I did want to thank, thank you for the presentation, thank everybody for the presentation. I did wanted to speak about the process of, of grants and federal funding and, and the opportunities that we have there. And then I just want to say, thank you for the process of making sure that we are having those meetings and, and discussing things with the, the property owners and not just doing property grabs. I think that, I think the message around that is that we do do a great job of that, especially in seeing some of the, the processes that have happened in the past. And so just ensuring that we continue to do that and to negotiate openly and transparently with the community, aware of how we do that process, I think is important so that we can get rid of some of the miscommunication that happens around when we try to do these things or for the public benefit. So I just want to thank the city for the hard work and due diligence on that.
Councilmember Alderks.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for this presentation. I really do appreciate the, the visual. Easier to understand in this format than in the packet, for sure. And so my question is more along the lines of pedestrian safety and, and I, and I just want to acknowledge that a previous council had put this into, into the capital facilities plan. And so this is actually the first time I'm, I'm encountering this, this particular project. And so I'd love to understand how traffic is going to be affected through that area as well as concerns about pedestrian safety. So can you speak to that a little bit?
I cannot.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Paul. I didn't know we were still on, on your, on your piece.
I was muted. So yeah, so during the alternative design, our consultant had looked at four alternatives, which including signalized intersection and a smaller size roundabout and also the other option is a roundabout with a slip link. And we looked at the level of service and it's based on the level of service, it determined that the current layout you shown is the, is, is the preferred option that will provide the best level of, a level of service for the future design year, which is twenty forty-five. And also, and, and as the study also shows, roundabout in general will provide a more safer traffic flow for then regular in, in, signalized intersection. Because roundabout is in general have a lower speed and the, for approach cars and also the, in the circulating, the the travel lane will only have fifteen ma, fifteen ma, fifteen mile per hour speed, travel speed. And the, for pedestrian, it, the, the crosswalk is sitting, sit back from the, the, I mean, the center of the traffic. So, and then for this project also provides sidewalks and a buffer strip between, to separate the pedestrian and the, I mean, the, the travel lane, so which will provide a more safe workspace for pedestrians. And as for the, also, the project will improve the bike facility at this location. So the bike has options to choose to travel, to ride within the travel lane along with the traffic or like they can trans, get off and transfer onto the sidewalk and across at those crosswalks with pedestrians. So overall, the, the, the improvements will improve the safety for both the vehicles and pedestrians and the bicycles.
Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Yong Ching, for your thorough presentation. I was able to attend the meeting on the ninth and I think there's a lot of really good information in that presentation as well. I saw a lot of engaged community members, a lot of neighbors there, asking great questions. And I don't know if we have it on our website. I was trying to pull it up real quick. But if we don't have that session recorded and posted there, I, I hope we will just for future engagement, anybody who's interested in the project can go and, and review it and hear those questions. Also see the presentation. I thought there's a lot of really good graphics in there. As an example, the, the safety part, where an intersection that signaled, there's many, many more safety issues with that in terms of collision points than there is with a roundabout, which actually really surprised me. I tend to think of roundabouts as less safe because you don't have controlled traffic flow. It's, it's more on the driver to make the decision of when to enter and exit. But in reality, there are many, many times less number of collision points in that. So thank you again. Thank you for all the work that you've done. Glad to hear that staff is engaging with the residents that are effective and affected and have opened those communication channels. And I think it's a positive sign. We haven't heard any concerns and I hope we'll continue to negotiate in good faith and make sure that, that they come out whole.
I am, I would like to hear more about the smaller circle option that you mentioned earlier. Because a smaller circle seems like it would slow traffic a little bit, which would save, which would make it safer for all pedestrians and cyclists. And also we might have to take a little bit less land, which seems like a good option to me as well. Can you speak to that?
After we evaluate, yes, yeah, after we evaluate the, the, the traffic movements for larger vehicle, especially there's a school bus constantly need to go through this intersection. And then there's a fire truck, they all need to go through the intersection. And then it, it was determined that a little bit larger circle would be provide more proper, appropriate turning movements for those vehicles.
Is it those vehicles couldn't get through the intersection or they just have to slow down?
Yeah, they have to drive onto the truck April, which is not preferred by fire trucks or school buses.
I mean, I get that's not preferred, but for the amount of time they have to do it, is that something that we could build out? And we could save ourselves a little bit of land acquisition money and not have to take land from our neighbors?
Yeah, Mayor, I think that Eddie Lowe is also with us tonight and he is, as you know, the deputy director of our Public Works Division and our department and I believe also the acting director for tonight. So he's, he's coming on, I believe, to be able to answer that question as well. And I think, yeah, we'll turn it over to Eddie.
Well, thank you, City Manager Kahal. Good evening, Mayor and the premier and council members. I have been kind of listening to it and I appreciate council deliberating and, you know, kind of better understand what staff is trying to do. So some years ago, we had actually looked at roundabouts and we tried to get to a smaller roundabout. And Noshaw School District basically say, there's no way they can make the turn. And it's an important route for the school district to get the buses to those schools to where they serve. And this is an important route that Noshaw School District. So we've worked with the stakeholders to make sure that, you know, safety is number one and I think the school district agree with that. And so this has proved to be the best option for all the options we looked at. It, it's, it's certainly proven not just what staff is saying. You've seen a lot of the roundabouts coming out these days because it is proven to be the safest in terms of statistics. It forces the driver to slow down to fifteen miles an hour to negotiate it. So that itself has shown through, you know, nationally and locally that accidents are very, very minimal because people can react to that speed. So I, I just want to reinforce that it's important that when we put these intersections out there that this, this turned out to be the best option for it. I'm excited about it because it will be the first roundabout in Bothell and we will learn a lot and we've learned a lot from, you know, knowing that others have tried and have shown years and years of data that proves that roundabout of this size is actually the safest way to control traffic.
Mayor, I just add to you, I, I did hear in your question, the aspect of, I, I don't hear you questioning whether roundabouts are effective, but there is a question about size and effectiveness. Maybe one thing, again, you'll never hire me to be your traffic engineer or engineer in all, so let's be clear about that. But from some other conversations that I've been part of, I think there's also to what you're asking about, well, there's an impact to certain types of vehicles. Could we live with that? And I think there are some maintenance concerns on that, probably also some risk concerns. And I won't advise you on that either, but in terms of, from a risk management standpoint, designing something that could lead to both maintenance issues for the roundabout itself, but also for school district buses, that sort of thing. So I think what I hear though is clear, clear interest in we're at thirty percent design aspect and really as we're moving this forward, making sure that we have the right economy of scale. Is it, is it effective? Is it safe? And is it accomplishing what we're looking for?
Yeah, and the presentation, level of service was cited for the reason as the, of the larger roundabout. And I just want to make sure that we've done everything that we can to make sure that we are, you know, taking as little land from our neighbors as possible. And I mean, level of service through one intersection doesn't, I mean, it's a system. They're going to get to the light that's one block down. Like, I, I guess, you know, if, if they go through there five percent slower, I don't view that as having a huge effect overall on traffic. And I just want to make sure we've exhausted with the consultant, all the options that we have. You know, if there's a way to do a smaller roundabout with perhaps a little cutout for larger vehicles on, on just one side, it's not a complete circle. You know, I, I, I'm, I just want to make sure we've exhausted those options and we're not just doing it for level of service. Because there's a light one block away.
That, that's a good point. I just wanted to add that, you know, I didn't really talk about the level of service. I think we have to allow the, the trucks and the buses to be able to negotiate it, but we're forcing them to negotiate at a very low speed. And that's a fairly consistent message. We're not just building for level of service. That's why we call it this. In fact, this grant that we got from the federal, you know, grant is actually under the safety program. So, so they look at it as being, we need to make it safe. And that's where we're heading towards. If we can get it any small, we try to make it a lot smaller, but they will not be able to negotiate that turn. So that's where we are.
Got it.
But, but we're getting it to a, a fairly condensed area whereby it's compact enough that they can make that turn, they're doing it at a lower speed and they don't label to negotiate it. So there's no way, if you look at the design again, and, and I didn't think Yong Ching really got into detail on it, it forces the driver to actually slow down and it's not coming in at right angle. So that itself is designed with all the, what we call the diverters and, and the way the, the, the roundabout is designed, it forces the driver to slow down. They're not going to be able to, to go through it.
Totally. No, and I, and I get that. It's just a smaller circle would force them to slow down even more and that would be good too.
Correct.
Thank you. Let me, I, I too share the deputy mayor's concern. It would be nice if we would reach out and talk to the folks about the project so that when we were brought this and we had to vote, we could say, hey, we've talked to all of them, they all understand what's going on. You know, it feels a little less antagonistic with our neighbors that way. And I understand we've sent them some things in the mail, but I'd be just interested to hear kind of what they think. I'm assuming that, I would hope that they're at the open house. But I don't know. A question that I had that was sort of answered was, you know, where the bike facilities are there. And I would argue that a choice of riding in the vehicle lane or the sidewalk is not bike facilities. So, yeah, those are, those are basically my questions.
Yeah, and I think to the, to the first one, it was some good, some good insight for future. I think where we definitely hear counsel around, I think a shared desire around not wanting to invoke eminent domain when that, you know, unless absolutely necessary. And even then, we'd have to really be on the same page that it was necessary. And so I hear your first, your first question really around coming for, going forward in a process with really trying to ensure that we've done our public outreach, but also being able to share that with council so that you know what, what has been done and what has been exhausted before it even comes to the council for the question. So we can definitely make note of that.
Thank you. And, and when we reach out to them the very first time and we're like, yeah, council's already voted for eminent domain. Like, that's not a great start to the conversation and it doesn't make us look great.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager and Deputy Public Works Director. That's long, like, to have an acronym for that government. I was wondering related to that, if we can, if the possibility to postpone the vote on the ordinance, given the, you know, the, how it looks for, you know, when we approach the owners. It's like, hey, we already voted, we're going to take your land if you don't agree with us type thing, you know. Is it okay to postpone until we actually have a real interaction with them?
Well, can I add something? Yeah, so, um, so we, we, we didn't talk to the property owner regarding this right of way acquisition issue, but we actually had some contact with the, the property owner regarding some other issues. And then for this northeast, well, at this four inter, four corners, like one of those are the, is a vacant land and then it's a development project. So the city has actually been in contact with the developer regarding their development project. So they are aware we are going to have this project and they And they, and there was a conversation between the city and the developer on the north, northeast corner. And then on the northwest corner of the intersection, this is a common tractor owned by our homeowner association. So we've been trying to contact the homeowner association. And then it was found out that the homeowner association was not exist. So we are still doing the research on this one. And then as for the southwest corner, the property owner did also contacted the city regarding some other issue related to the sanitary sewer. So, so he's aware of our project and then we had some discussions. And then as for the southeast corner of that, it's a vacant land. So far, yes, we haven't heard anything from them yet.
And also to add to that, one of the concerns that staff has is the, the timing of this. And so there's a need for us to acquire the land for the project in order to receive the federal funds. And assuming the worst, that we can't negotiate directly with the homeowners, we would need to have approximately nine months to a year in order to pursue formal condemnation, in order to meet the, the required timelines of the project, in order to secure the federal funding. So that's why we're asking for this action this evening. I, I think it's very much heard by staff that this might not be the preferred process and that in the future that the council would prefer that we reach out in advance. And we have definitely heard that and will take those steps in the future.
Is it something that can wait two weeks? Like, are we like up against it with a deadline right now?
Yeah, the one, sorry, Paul. I, I was just, Paul had a better answer. The one thing I just note is that with the next two council meetings being focused on a selection of a council member and then we're coming up on the August break. I, I would predict that the agenda on the nineteenth is going to be very lengthy. So there's one risk of that, of that, you know, it could be something that if it did come back, the concern would be around just the volume of things for you. But Paul, I don't know if you know a little bit more on that?
I don't have that agenda in front of me at the moment. I mean, as, as the City Manager said, there's a risk that, like I said, the timing's crucial for the land acquisition in order to obtain the federal dollars. And without going into too much detail, as Ms. Yu said, there is one property owner that it's vacant land and that there are additional complications with that particular piece of land that we would need to engage probably the resources of outside legal counsel in order to prosecute that condemnation should that occur. So I, I can't predict whether or not a two or three week delay would be significantly impactful. But I do understand that there are concerns from staff regarding the timing of the project already.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
About the vacant land, my question is, from the, from the graphic that we were shown, there are going to be new sidewalks added. And so I'm just wondering, is there some value adding, like some added value that, that vacant land is going to receive now that they're going to get at least, you know, part of their, part of the property given, basically provided with sidewalks that, that might benefit them in some regard?
My general assumption would be, yes, I'm not a legal appraiser of, of property, but I would assume that finished sidewalks, that would be a part of the project, could be considered value added. But like I said, I don't think I'm qualified to speak to that.
All right, I don't see any more hands up right now. So basically what we're hearing is that, like, if we wanted to just take a couple of weeks and get a couple of things figured out, we're not sure how much that would affect the viability of the project. We don't know?
We, that would be my answer. I can't say for certain that two or three weeks. And I, and I think that generally I'm always, I would generally be in favor of like waiting a week or two or three. With this project, there is enough uncertainty and because the risk reward ratio doesn't sit well with me and I tend to be risk averse. But the preference would be that we proceed tonight. But if we need to wait until July nineteenth, we would do our best to make that work. But we can't guarantee timelines as it is. And an additional three weeks just adds to that process and that uncertainty.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. So Paul, quick question for you. So if we move the, the recommended action tonight, move forward with this, is there anything saying that that it would take place in the future or we still have another touch on this?
If we got the direction, if the proposed ordinance was passed this evening, that directs me to reach out and negotiate reasonably to, with the property owners in order to acquire the land more quickly than the, the nine to twelve month process that a formal condemnation action would, would take to prosecute.
Okay, so this, this would be the first step, best approach versus condemnation is what I'm hearing.
Well, I think to answer your question is there wouldn't necessarily be a second touch with council. This, this action tonight would give the staff the direction they needed to proceed with the right-of-way negotiations and acquisitions. And if those negotiations then failed, it would give me the authority to then prosecute the action in Superior Court. We would, of course, we would update you, but we, we wouldn't necessarily need to come back for further council action.
Okay, and by doing that, it gives us the opportunity to continue with these, the grant process. If we don't do it, then we could potentially miss the grant opportunity?
That is my understanding from speaking with staff. I don't want to sound overly dramatic because again, it is, as Mayor Thompson pointed out, a three-week period. But deadlines are deadlines. And so us being able to move on this more quickly is preferable, is what I'll say.
And can you remind me what the total cost, what the total grant would be for this?
I would have to defer to Ms. Yu or Mr. Roberts.
The total, total grant for the project is 1.76 million, including design, right-of-way and the construction.
Okay, so if we don't, if we don't get this grant, then this project probably will not move forward. Is that correct?
I also cannot speak to that. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, that, that is correct. It will have, with great difficulty. Unless we fund it locally with local funds, which I am not sure we have programmed, the project would be halted for an indefinite time.
And Mayor, well, I, I know you'll look to me to make things clearer. I'll, I'll add another variable to the mix. But one option too that is council is, what I hear is the concerns around the part B of this presentation. So as a reminder, there's two actions that we're asking council of tonight, the right-of-way plan and then the eminent domain. And so it may also benefit us from a schedule risk standpoint to consider setback and consider them both as separate items. And if we could move forward with the right-of-way plan, then that's at least something certain. And then part B, again, that gets to be council's decision if you want more information before you take action. But I do just want to remind that even though we had one presentation, there's two pieces of legislation before you.
Thank you for that, City Manager Standard. What if we approved these tonight, but with a caveat that we wanted to see staff come back on the nineteenth? And we wanted an update on how the conversations were going with the affected people? As well as I would just like to see something a little more formal in terms of turning radius of a school bus in this, just to make sure we're really minimizing the footprint.
No, I, I have to, I have to, I have to, I have to apologize to everybody. I, I wasn't done actually asking questions or talking. So just want to make sure that I can finish my thoughts and questions if that's okay.
Would, would you mind if they answered that question real quick, Councilmember McNeil, and we'll turn it back to you?
Sure, that's fine.
So in terms of I, that would be, we can do that. But keep in mind though, that because formal condemnation is a legal action, that my preference would be that in terms of an update, we talk in executive session for potential litigation. But yes, we could bring that back on the nineteenth for an update.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it this time. I think my, my train of thought is, has been taken away at this point. But I do want to make sure that, yeah, I'll, I'm gonna hold my thoughts for right now. Thank you.
All right, I guess at this point in time, we're waiting for a motion. Councilmember Mankey? You're muted. We all do it. It's cool. You're still muted, though.
There we go. All right. I will move the recommended action for AB twenty-two oh nine seven.
Councilmembers Zorns?
Second.
All right, I have a motion on the table from Councilmember Mankey and a second from Councilmember Zorns to move the recommended action. Is there any discussion? All right, Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, just to clarify, the motion was for AB twenty-two oh nine seven, only not for both, correct?
Correct.
Hold on, I have to remember what that means. So that is the?
Sorry, go ahead.
No.
It's the right, that's the, the, oh, eight, twenty-two oh nine seven is the right-of-way acquisition plan. It does not include the ordinance for condemnation. That is the next one.
If I wanted to amend a motion for staff to come back and we can do your piece in executive session, the piece that I would really like to see is making sure that we're minimizing the footprint of this. And, you know, school buses were mentioned and I just, you know, want to see what the size of this is, what the turning radius is needed for a school bus and really make sure that that footprint is as small as possible. When would be the best time to add that to the motion?
I think that, yeah, with a, with a show of hands by a majority of the council members, we could add that, we could add that update and that's bring back to the July nineteenth agenda. There wouldn't need to be an amending motion to either a twenty-two oh nine seven or twenty-two oh nine eight. And so if a majority of council wants to have that update, if, and perhaps it might be regarding oh nine eight, that that might be the caveat for you voting in favor is that there's, there's the, the consensus to bring that back on the nineteenth for an update. And if so, then if the, if it doesn't, if council isn't satisfied in executive session, the agenda can always be amended on the, on the nineteenth to either affirm, change, amend any action that are, or prior council direction.
I'd like to do that. And I'd be happy to vote to move this forward tonight and just with an understanding, you guys are going to come back and brief us real quick on that?
Is that just by a brief show of hands, is that okay with the remaining, remaining, remaining members of council? And with Councilmember McNeil, I would need, okay, there you go.
There it is.
So I'm raised, I'm, I'm sorry, I raised my hand because I got cut off there for a second.
Sorry.
And I just needed to confirm the, was there a motion made while I was away?
No, so the motion, the motion right now is for Agenda Bill twenty-two oh nine seven. That is the right-of-way acquisition plan only. The question then occurred, the question was posed by Council Mayor Thompson as to whether or not there was an amending motion would be necessary in order to bring this item back on the nineteenth in order for staff to give an update to council and then potentially receive additional direction from council. So the, the question that I had is then by a show of hands, if the majority of council is fine with that option of coming back on the nineteenth as opposed to an amending motion? And if I recall correctly, I saw everyone that is present. Is that correct? Can you just do it again to satisfy me? I'm sorry. Thank you. And then Councilmember McNeil, because your video wasn't on, if you could orally say yes or no in terms of having staff bringing this back on the nineteenth for an update or briefing?
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the motion before the council right now is solely for Agenda Bill twenty-two oh nine seven regarding the right-of-way acquisition plan.
All right, would anybody else like to discuss the matter? All right, City Clerk?
You say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmember Zorns?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Mankey?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Pass the six zero.
All right, I will entertain a motion for Agenda Bill twenty-two zero nine eight. Councilmember Mankey?
I move the recommended action.
Councilmember Zorns?
Second.
All right, I have a motion on the table from Councilmember Mankey and a second from Councilmember Zorns to move the recommended action for Agenda Bill twenty-two zero nine eight. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and this question is for Paul. Is can we do something similar as we did? Is the update going to, can we have an update on conversations with that? That's gonna?
The update would be, the update would be, that was my understanding is that the update would be for both of these agenda items because they're related.
Okay, thank you.
All right, City Clerk?
You say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmember Zorns?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Mankey?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Pass the six zero.
We can call a former colleague of ours to see what they think about it if we, if we really want to. All right, thank you. Moving on. We have Agenda Bill twenty-two zero nine nine, Capital Facilities Plan Committee assignment. City Clerk, you're going to introduce this item for discussion and a possible appointment.
Yeah, so we brought this item before the council on June seventh. Obviously, the, there's an open seat since Councilmember Dorr left the city council. And the next meeting of the Capital Facilities Plan Committee is July twenty-eighth. So we're hoping to get a council consensus and an appointment and I will open it up for a discussion there.
Well, this is something Councilmember McNeil and I spoke about a little bit. Councilmember McNeil, did you, did you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
All right. I would like to be on this committee. Can I move that? I don't even know how that works.
We typically ask for the appointments by consensus, so.
Okay. Councilmember Zorns?
Well, I'm just curious if Councilmember McNeil is still interested in this position.
Yeah, would you like me to speak to that, Mr. Mankey? Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely still interested in this and the, and the committee and the work that needs to be done on the Capital Facilities Plan. But I feel like all of our, our council members are qualified to be on this committee. I think that as long as we're communicating and we're open and transparent with the, the things that we're discussing on moving our community forward. I think if we're all engaged in those conversations, whether it be committee or a council as a whole, I'm okay. From my standpoint, I think we're all qualified. So I would be okay not being on the committee. I would just ask that as the committee meets, I think there's a couple of meetings left that the information that comes out of those, those, those meetings gets brought back to the entire council. So the entire council can weigh in as we're going through the process. We're, we're embarking on some pretty tough times for our community as well as the region. I think it's important that we understand moving our community forward, the direction that we're going to take our community. I want to be part of that direction as a sitting council member. And I feel I can do that as long as, as a committee, the committee brings that back to the whole council. With that said, I would, I would be in support of the mayor being on the Capital Facilities Plan. I think you, you'd make a great addition to it. I believe we have two others that are on that committee currently, Councilmembers Zorns and Mankey, that are also doing an amazing job on that, on that committee. So I, I'm okay with not being on that committee.
Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. I appreciate that. All right, what does consensus look like? A show of hand. Oh, Councilmember Manke.
I was just going to concur. I think, I think you'd represent us well on the committee and we'd be happy to have you.
Thank you very much. You'll be there, you'll be there to make sure.
And Mayor, to answer your question regarding consensus, we could do raising of hands or we could do an oral vote as well. It's up to the council.
How about hands? That looks easy.
We would need an oral.
From Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah.
Didn't he just kind of give that?
I mean, trust but verify, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Get to the right page here. All right, Agenda Bill twenty-two one zero zero, the first quarter to twenty-twenty-two budget status report. And this is a presentation only, no action required. And we have interim Finance Director Maureen Scholes here to present and entertain our questions.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I hope you're not too disappointed this evening as I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for a couple of reasons. I'm. I'm encouraged and looking forward to the next Agenda Bill on your priorities. But also, since I brought you last, the last quarter of twenty-one. Not much has changed, has been relatively unchanged for this first quarter report. We always talk about our main revenue streams. That we watch such as property tax, which property tax remains steady and stable. Then we have our utility tax, as we've spoken in the past, has tended to lag over the last. Part quarters of the, of this biennium, particularly with the telephone tax. Then we have our sales tax, our retail sales tax. So for the first quarter, it was overall an increase of five point seven percent since. The, the same quarter of last year. It did fluctuate a little bit between months, so January came in slightly lower, which. Wasn't unusual as we thought, you know, people were, had already done their holiday shopping in December and were done with that. February compared to last year was relatively flat. And then March jumped, March was like six percent over last year's figure. So the overall was five point seven. Now, we recently, just the other day, got the April results and the retail sales tax was down again compared to. So it's fluctuating, it's fluctuating up and down. So we are definitely monitoring that. However, on the construction sales tax, the construction sales tax remains very strong, a thirty percent increase over the same period of last year. And then April, which we just received, is also up and continues on that trend. Couple of other noteworthy items I just wanted to bring to your attention that you will see in the second quarter report is. Anticipated by the end of this month to receive the six million remaining ARPA funding from the federal government. And then expect to see some rather large expenditures in the Public Safety Capital Fund as we near completion of the Canning Park Fire Station forty-five. And just a reminder that those funds were the voter approved. Councilman, the voter approved bonds that are funding that. Oh, let's see, we also, along with the construction sales tax, building permits. And some of the other permits were also showing an increase for this first quarter with only development review fees and plan check fees were, were down from. Twenty twenty-one. We did add a new attachment for you in this report. Which is our investment schedule. We were able to make some investments that were not what we call non-pool investments. We. Invest most of our city investments in the Washington State Investment Pool. It's very stable, but it doesn't have very high interest rates, which you know, over the last couple of years, interest rates have not been that high. So we had some opportunities during this quarter and we invested in those type of investments with higher return rates. In the, in the future. And on that note, in this quarterly reports, as we presented, if there's other data and information that you would like to see, you know, in these reports that you're not getting, we'd like to get, please let us know. Then economic indicators. I, I think every time I was starting to prepare this report, I kept changing that economic section because it's been changing. Quite, quite often. But one of our main factors that we are looking at is that cost of living. Consumer price index. So what we call the CPI, June to June. We will receive what that index is mid-July. And that CPIW is going to have a significant or could have a significant effect on our development of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. As some of our current contracts or union contracts are tied to that amount as well as, you know, cost of goods and services. So we are. Waiting, awaiting to see what that. Rate is going to be. Right now, they're, you know, it's either nine percent or ten percent and, and those are, those are large percentages that we'll have to weigh in when we prepare a budget. Then. The last thing I was going to just, just share with you is that our audit is in full swing and. We have auditors are. Auditing our financial statements. The city has three sections of the audit that we are audited on each year. We have the financial statements they audit, then the accountability and the federal grants. Once they complete our financial statements, the audit of, of our financial report, then we will pass that on and submit that to the Government Finance Officers Association. To. To see if we can get the certificate of excellence in financial reporting again. If we do get that award for twenty twenty-one, it will be the twenty-first consecutive year that we have received that award. So stay tuned on that. And with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor and council and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Interim Director Scholes, you seem very calm for somebody that is in the middle of an audit in full swing.
Yeah. You gotta stay calm. Same with the CPI, gotta stay calm.
Yes.
I'll do it.
Not a lot of questions for you tonight. It was that thorough. There's the Deputy Mayor.
I am just gonna not ask a question actually to continue, so you won't see not a lot of questions. I was just gonna make a comment. It's great to see. You know, more black than red. And, you know, things moving up. I know mid-July, we might. You might not be so calm or we might all not be so calm, you know, as the CPI numbers come out, although they will be similar to what we see today. So there probably not be. Too many surprises, but I'm glad that we're. Working on this. I'm glad that the numbers look good. I just wanna, hopefully, we can. Since our discussion a couple of months ago about the sales tax, retail sales tax, how that's increased, maybe we can, in the next Agenda Bill, we can discuss how we can help make that even. Increase that even more if there's an option for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Alderks.
I would echo the Deputy Mayor and, and I just, because I remember this, the discussion at the council member retreat about. About additional funding or revenue streams and sources. And so I am still looking forward to hearing more about that. And just appreciate you being here to share this update with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just jump in and say that I really appreciated the budget versus actual numbers by fund. Having that level of detail was really nice in there. I enjoyed that quite a bit. The, the one thing that I would be curious about is how our revenues would be looking assuming we were fully staffed. With all of the positions. So the, the one thing that, that I'm not sure is like, how do our revenues look? Assuming we didn't have a bunch of open positions and are we able to fill the budgeted positions that we have right now? I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head right now, but that's, that's just the one thing that, that as I look through here, I would have liked to see if that's not incredibly difficult.
It's not. Actually, we are, our analysts are working on that with these project, with the six-year projections. So yeah, you'll be getting that. Yeah, we can get that.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Well, I see no more hands, so I'm gonna move on. Thank you so much for your time. Next up, we have council priorities twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And we have City Manager Standard, I don't have to say interim in front of that anymore, which is really cool. I'm here to have that conversation with us.
It was played in my, to my worries. I always remind myself every day we're interim, so you just never know, but thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And just to tee things up to, as a reminder, I'm here tonight with our retreat facilitator and. Friend of Boffal, who is working with us through the budget process. While we do have Maureen filling in in the interim role. So really thrilled to have her with us tonight. She'll be sharing some slides as we go. Looking ahead at what, what we have on there. Marilyn, I do want to pause to make sure you can come on camera and. I won't make you say I'm gonna share my screen, but if, if you want to go ahead and bring the slides up while I'm talking, that'll be fine. We can catch up. But is your camera working, Marilyn?
Your microphone working, Marilyn?
Yeah. Where I might be here. Here to your facilitator. There we go. Okay, Marilyn, I think you're still, you're still muted. It shows mute anyway. We cannot hear you.
Got it. I can't seem to have, I can't seem to have all things at once. I can see you or I can see the presentation, so I'll work on it.
Okay, and if at some point you do want to switch, you just let me know and I'll, I'll post slides up too. But. All right, so with that, just again, thank you, council, and it's. Tonight is a, a good one. By way of background, it's the, we can go back to when I, when I was able to join you voluntarily to participate in your, your retreat in April. So really glad that I was here for that. I want to put some context around tonight's conversation because I know. As we've been having some initial meetings, I think there's a, a real synergy around for everybody of wanting to have an opportunity to be talking about. Council vision, council priorities. And so a bit of context tonight of what we're hoping to accomplish is that. Just as a reminder, we are staffed with hard work preparing to bring a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget forward. For your consideration and to discuss with the community this fall. And so what we're looking for tonight, what Marilyn's prepared to do is to guide through a conversation. That really links the themes that came out of the council retreat, which focused on budget, as you said. And some themes came up of some, some big objectives. There are some big outcome areas. And she's gonna walk us through to help really drill into some of those priorities and put some. High-level, big-picture context around it to help inform budget proposals as they're coming in, coming to me and making it into the recommended budget. And I also just want to acknowledge again, it's hunger for a bigger, broader priorities conversation. So tonight, we do want to come, take away with something that can be used to help inform the budget, but I've definitely heard from all of you of. An interest of coming back together for maybe an additional retreat. To do some strategic visioning work together. And I think the fall would be a great time for that, too. Having a seventh council member, getting, getting them integrated into the team. And then also, you know, again, the budget, while we do have deadlines and timelines on that. It's never, it's never chiseled some. So if there are priorities and any adjustments maybe to make, I'd love to do that this fall. Marilyn, are you, are you able to get the slides up at all?
So you can't see the slides yet?
Not, we are not seeing the slides.
All right, working on it then.
And so the reason, reason I have, I'm gonna want to show you the timeline here in a second. So let me. Let me pull that up.
Why don't, yeah, you can take control, Kyle, City Manager, because I'm not being very successful.
All right. Okay, so hopefully, we're now all looking at the same page literally. So this is then your real flashback moment, because sometimes when we see ourselves, we remember where we really were at. So the council retreat, April twenty-two, again, the conversation and Marilyn provided a great retreat report to all of us as well. It started off by looking at survey results and reminding ourselves of things, themes that have been coming out of the community. And then also each council member had the opportunity to brainstorm, what are some priorities, budget priorities, both in terms of. Where would you want to spend? Is there anything you'd want to reduce? And there were conversations which were discussed tonight a little bit around. If, if there's any potential revenue changes that council would want to pursue, not to implement in this budget, but are there things that we want to, want to move forward? So with that came some themes, excuse me, I'm gonna go back. With that came some themes and that's what Marilyn will jump on tonight. But just before we do, I am a visual person. We'll really try and bring you some. Process reminders. So this is a high-level timeline, just again, to ground everybody where we are in the budget development. We're discussing tonight here at the end of June to talk about strategic priorities being finalized. And also staff are working on department budget requests to come to me and for consideration. And to work with the E L T on as well. And then in July, we will do intend to bring back anything that's discussed tonight, I believe, to finalize. But we'll, we'll move forward with what is discussed tonight as our guide point. August is gray because there'll be a recess and. We'll be working to really put together that recommended budget, which will tip into September as well. And then October, we'll really start having. Full discussions around the proposed budget. Some community engagement and hearing from you of what would you like to see and. In November, maybe the first part of December, we would be adopting. More detailed timeline will be available next time we talk, which I believe would be on the nineteenth of July when we focus on this. I'm gonna be meeting with Mo and her team as well as Marilyn to put together a more detailed timeline and budget schedule. So again, we're all on the same page and know what to expect. So with that tonight, I'm really happy to turn it over to Marilyn Beard of MMB Consulting. Again, her, her goal tonight is going to be to finalize strategic priorities and get some input from you on goals. And with that, Marilyn, if you're ready, I will turn it over to you and I will be happy to be your PowerPoint advisor.
Thank you. So this is kind of a getting back up into the, sort of the big picture a little bit. Did a lot of work at the retreat and so this is a follow-on to that. So next slide. So in your packet, these were the, we call them strategic priorities. And this was sort of a summary of what, you know, general themes came out of the retreat. And based, so we were able to take all of the comments that you put on the sticky notes and everything that you prioritized and. Sort of came into some big buckets. And so one of the things that when we did the retreat, we asked these, what things did you want to maintain? Increase or make one-time investments in or have, you know, create some new revenue streams. And so. One of the two things for tonight, one is, are these the right priorities? Does this sound like what you talked about at your retreat? Is something missing? Is, you know, the, how you look at these, these are just very general statements. And then we'll ask you to try to begin to articulate. A goal statements about, so if these are the priorities, where do you want to be? So I will ask you, as we go through each of these strategic priorities. That the, the larger level to say, is this, is this a good title? Is this a priority? Is this a, is this the right level for this? And then we'll start talking about goals. So next. So as we think about linking them to the budget, there's a hierarchy of things that take place. You have your vision. We talked about that. That's established already. These, this is the next, these are your strategic priorities, we're calling them. And that could be called anything you want to call them. So this is, you know, there's no. If you want to call them something different, you can. Below the strategic priorities are the goals. And goals are the topics that we'll talk about tonight. And talk about how you would like to see those framed. Objectives are more specific and they're measured both in terms of time and product, what's going to be produced by when and how much. And those are more specific, and so those come a little bit later in the process and are developed as part of the budget process. And so we won't necessarily talk about those tonight. And if you, but if you begin to talk about things about, that are more objectives rather than goals, we will be making notes and bringing that back as possible objectives for you to take a look at. So work plan items, from the goals to coming to objectives, and out of that come work plan items. And work plan items are what is resourced through the budget process. They are they are approved in the budget, items that are approved in the budget are then measured and reported back to the city council and the community. And so this is sort of the, you know, the big vision, priorities, goals, objectives, work plan items. And we're not really thinking so much about work plan items at this point, even though there was a lot of things that came out of your retreat that are definitely, I'd consider work plan items. And so hopefully staff is going to bring those back and show you how all those things you talked about relate to your strategic priorities and goals. So next. So in attachment one, we provided just sort of a sample of what a goal statement might sound like. If environmental sustainability is the one, this is not in any order. That's the priority, a sample goal statement, and this was, this is just made up out of our heads. So you are, we'll be looking for you to create a goal statement. And it's always about the why, why is this a priority? What are you trying to achieve? A goal is what you're trying to get to. So in this case, a sample would be to protect the community's environment by incorporating sustainable practices in all city services. Very high level, very general. The kinds of objectives that you might have related to that, again, some of this came from your, this came from your discussion at the retreat, is to incorporate House Bill 1099 elements into the comprehensive planning process that will take place in 2024. And another example is reduce the city's fleet greenhouse gas emissions by incrementally replacing city vehicles with those that are energy efficient and that reduce reliance on fossil fuels as vehicles are due for replacement. And what would happen is that, I think the staff would provide some suggestions about how far you can get on these things when? How, you know, what is the, what is the, how many vehicles do you want to replace if that becomes an objective? Does that make sense? Have I totally confused you or are you still with me? You with me? Okay, all righty then. So what I'll do is I'll walk through each priority area, and I've pulled some of the comments from the sticky notes that we had from your retreat. I didn't, I didn't pull them all, but just to prime them up, pump and remember, remind you what you talked about related to these different areas. So next. Okay, so under environmental sustainability, things like K4C participation, vehicle electrification, House Bill 1099, electric charging stations in the city, solar panel program, climate action plan. And partnering with the Tribes for Salmon Habitat Restoration. Some of these are really general, some of these are pretty specific. And they're the kinds of things that you might want to begin talking about in your, in your budget. But for now, I would ask you, next. How would you articulate the council's goal for environmental sustainability? What do you, I, again, you don't, you can start with the one, the sample that we gave you. We gave you a few samples for a few of the priorities. But again, those weren't recommendations, those were just, this is about sort of the format that you might want to consider using. So what would be helpful for us is, Mary, I'll look, I'll look to you to guide the conversation and call on people, but what I'm looking for right now is what kind of words are important to you to see in that goal statement on environmental sustainability?
And Marilyn, would it help for me to stop sharing while you get feedback from council?
I can see them now, so I can see both the PowerPoint and them, so I'm good.
All right, council member Zorance, and everybody just use the raise hand feature because you'll come to the top.
Yeah, I only request that as we go through working on each one of these goals that we have in front of us, a slide that has those listed items, because I think that'll help us shape that language, thank you.
Yes, that's the plan.
All right. Still looking for somebody to raise their hand and go over the question. Council member Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wrote down and brainstormed two different goals that fit under this objective. I'd like to toss them out there. The first one is to protect the environment by incorporating sustainable practices into city services. I know that's pretty broad, but it opens it up for a lot of actions underneath. One idea is the, the Green Fleet Climate Action Plan, I mean, there's a lot of things that can be put under that, so that's the first one. And then the second one is to enhance mobility and access to alternative and sustainable modes of transportation. And under that goal, I could see things like having a permanent lime contract or bird or Uber or whoever you, you know, you want to choose as your mobility partner for scooters. Having, you know, more, more focus on sidewalks, walking and biking type facilities and focus. And there's probably a lot more with that, but those are the two that I brainstormed over the week in thinking about this.
Okay, so what you, what you're suggesting, and this is, this is great, this is exactly what we're looking for, because what we would do is we would take both of those statements and incorporate them into a goal, into one goal statement. And make sure that there are objectives that relate to each of those elements. So this was, that was helpful.
Are we only looking to have a single goal and not multiple goals with multiple action items underneath?
You know, you can do whatever you want, because it's your, they're your goals. Normally you'd have one goal that covers, you know, sort of a really broad, goals are really broad and it's very, covers everything. And it could be one sentence, it could be two sentences, it could be two goals, and then there are objectives related to each. So that's entirely up to you, and that's, this is, but it does, again, goals stay at a fairly high level. And the devil's in the details, and so when you create objectives for how you're going to achieve those goals, then those are, so you could do it either way.
Okay, I think I've got multiple goals for each one, so you'll probably hear, hear multiple from me, but happy to have them all included into a single goal or two sentences combined with everybody else's.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Thank you, Mayor. A question about the goals, are we talking about goal for the next two years since, to align with the budget? Or are we talking about, here's a goal for 10, the next 10 years, and then over the, every biennial, every two years we update, or we update objectives or measure against the objectives we've set? How is it gonna work?
So, great question. And again, there's no, this is art as well as science, but goals don't, council goals don't typically change like every year or every two years necessarily, because they're sort of longer term aspirational things, and you reach them over time. But as a matter of practice, you ought to, the council should ought to, as you get into each budget process, look at your goal statements and say, are these still, this is still where we're at, is this still where we want to be? And that's the kind of planning that you would do going into a budget process at a, at a council retreat. And you talk about them and then say, are we missing anything, or do we need to restate this? Does that make sense?
It does. The reason I ask is that city manager also mentioned that we have budgeting coming up here, and I don't know if we have enough time in an hour or so to come up with like detail like amongst ourselves to agree on a goal and set of objectives that will also help inform what the budgeting would look like. That's where my concern lies, that we're not, we're gonna, you know, half-bake it. And then we won't be able to, you know, get to where we really need to get to in this, a lot of time.
Yeah, and deputy mayor, so I think let's, let's see what we can get done for tonight. And again, this won't be the only opportunity for us to have conversation, right? We will be having different, different opportunities, including the, I'll be sitting down with all six of you and soon seven of you individually as well, and we'll, we'll have time to really make sure that we're on the same page. I think in terms of the timing or the duration of the goal, or of the, of a timeline, don't let that restrain your thinking, right? Because if it's 10 years now, that's still, there are some things of what is the first step that we can take now? And if there is something that's a little bit more near term, again, some of this is going to be a prioritization and figuring out what can we accomplish? So I wouldn't get too worried about the time horizon tonight, don't let that sign into the conversation. But, you know, get some vision out there, and again, realize this won't be the last opportunity. We both will have, again, it sounds like momentum for a retreat, but also we have comp plan discussions coming up, so we're gonna get to be bold and long ranging together quite a bit.
And I believe the plan would be to, to take your comments, try to draft some goal statements and bring them back to you. And to see if, to see if we got even close.
Then may I make a suggestion? Can we just focus, say, on this, what we're doing right now, environmental, and then like make sure that we can flesh it out as much as we can, because I don't think we can go through each one of those seven identified topics today. And like actually have a goal that we all agree to, because we're gonna be wordsmithing and then we're gonna go through a set of objectives underneath each one, and so on.
Right. So tonight isn't so much about wordsmithing as it is about listening and getting your thoughts out there. And so it's not, there's not, there's no finished product coming out of tonight. This is just a starting point to get some ideas about, you know, what is your goal, what are your council goals, what, what do you want as a council? Where do you want to be in two, five, 10 years from now in these different areas? So this is just your first bite at the, you, it's your first bite at the goal of apple, so.
All right.
So it sounds like you want us more focusing on the strategic priorities then, rather than the things underneath them, correct?
Right, well, I just want, well, I do want to get some idea about how you would talk about a goal about each of these priorities. And is, are these the right priorities? You know, at the end of the night, yes, are these the right, do we get that right? Is, did we miss something, or? So.
I want to make sure we kick it back to the deputy mayor, and if he had anything else to say.
Thank you, thank you. I, can I make a suggestion then, since it's my turn, I see hands up and so get the goal thing going? My suggestion then for the goal is to take proactive actions to address climate change locally and regionally. That's where the wordsmithing and, and with, with regional partnerships. So we'll address climate change, proactive steps, look on, address climate change locally, since we affect that, we can influence that directly and then partnership regionally, since it's everybody's problem.
Council member Aldrichs.
All right, I think you, you've got down what the deputy mayor said, Marilyn? Okay, cool. I, I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate that there is a process, I didn't necessarily know what to expect coming into this meeting tonight. And so it's coming together, I see, I see how we can do this, and I'm grateful for, for the chance to do this with you. So for this particular priority for the city, my draft is something to this effect. Establish and begin implementing a comprehensive climate change mitigation strategy for the city in partnership with regional entities.
Okay. So very much, and that's a really general statement, so establish and begin implementation of a comprehensive climate action plan.
Climate change mitigation.
Climate change mitigation regionally, both locally and regionally. I think you talked about partnerships, right?
For the city, yeah, in partnership with regional entities.
Got it.
Thank you.
Council member Zorance.
Well, I think I would be muddying the waters, so I have a clarifying question here. Are you, are you taking some goal statements down, sampling from, from some goal statements from us? And then you're going to clarify it into a goal statement that we can word, wordsmith later?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, that's what I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, these are all really good things, this is exactly what I'm looking for from council. So, and I don't want to go on to the next priority until everybody's had a chance here, so where, where are we with this?
Have we heard from all the council members that want to speak? I will take that as a yes.
All right.
I, and that, that means I'm gonna go, because I have one thing that I wrote down for this. Instead of environmental sustainability, I would like to call this climate resilience. And have that be twofold. First, we contribute to the problem as little as possible. But second, how do we adapt with the effects of climate change? You know, extreme weather events are going to become more common. And part of our climate resilience strategy needs to be things like cooling centers, is an example for, for those events. And our public works department is probably gonna have to deal with more stuff than they've had to in the past, so just how we can be more resilient in the face of that.
Got it. Okay. We gotta, we've got to go to the next one now? So affordable housing choices, that's the, again, if you don't like the wording of the priority, you know, say, this should say something else. Some of the things that you talked about was affordable housing generally, diverse affordable housing in neighborhoods. Talked about speeding up the permitting process for underserved populations, and additional funding for ARCH. And this is one of the, I think this is one of the sample ones that we also provided in attachment one. If you wanted to refer to that. But, so I think, you know, it was something to the, to provide a range of housing affordability options that meet the demographics of the community and, you know, so something really general like that. Again, that was just a sample, so what do you have for this one? So go to the next one here, you can, you can stay here or just, yeah. There you go, thanks.
I, I was just going to actually say that I think your statement covered all the pieces that we had there, so I, I don't know if there's much more to finesse beyond that. When you talk about influence equitable service delivery, that also covers the piece of streamlining, so I don't have anything obvious to improve on that.
Okay.
Council member Manki.
I'd like to adjust the, the name to be Housing Choice and have it include not just affordable housing, but what I guess I would coin as attainable housing or housing diversity. So it includes the missing middle and, and things we really want to focus on. In terms of a goal, I guess to include both of those things, looking at affordable housing that the city works to help create either through ARCH funding or partnering with local community groups like the United Methodist Church on a, a project that they're working on, but also to look at zoning and changing zoning code to allow certain types of housing where it makes sense and codify, you know, if we're concerned about appearances of codify, you know, if we're concerned about appearances of whatever's being built to match the neighborhood, having that all codified, um, I think would be beneficial for, for any kind of housing, um, plans that we're making.
Okay, so, um, a little bit different approach to the uh, changing it from affordable housing to housing choices. And then to, um, create affordable housing through both local rules, local actions and through regional, through ARCH. Uh, and that includes changes to the zoning code that allow for a diversity of housing types.
You got it.
Boy, okay. Anybody else?
Any other council members want to speak before I give my two cents? Councilmember Aldrich.
All right, I was writing. All right. So this is, um, this is a little messy. So take, like, take some pieces from it. Um, address historic inequities through developing and implementing a comprehensive housing strategy that is inclusive of diverse housing types and provides, um, an immediate immediate shelter for the most underserved in our community, something to that effect.
Okay, that was a lot. And I, I will tell you the truth, I can't write that fast. But I, I think I got the basic things is to address historical inequities, uh, in housing. And to provide a, um, what's the second part of it? I'm, I'm not going to say.
Oh, see, I have the right down the third part. Okay. Um, we're, we're going to do this together. Okay. Uh, develop, developing and implementing a comprehensive housing strategy.
Uh, okay, that was it.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
That is inclusive of diverse housing types.
Mm-hmm.
And provides immediate housing to unhoused community members.
Okay, so that's, that's expanding this to housing, um, for people experiencing homelessness?
Yes, the, it's, it's incorporating the concept of, of, um, housing first strategies and healthier housing.
Okay, okay.
That's sort of the whole spectrum of, of housing.
Okay.
Any other council members want to speak before I jump in? All right, I'll go. I'm going to echo actually a little bit of what Councilmember Manki and what Councilmember Aldrich said. I appreciated the thoroughness with which they both looked at this, because I think oftentimes housing affordability gets pigeonholed into like, you know, we have this one affordable housing project. Um, I think Councilmember Manki said, uh, attainability. And I liked that. And that's a good word for market rate housing. Um, I wrote down increasing housing accessibility, because everybody needs access to housing, whether they need subsidized affordable housing, whether they need a shelter or whether they need simply something that's more affordable market rate housing. I think in the clarification, uh, I'm, I'm happy to mention affordability, but I don't want it to be what we lead with. So I would, I would say accessibility or attainability as well. Just so we're looking at a comprehensive strategy of providing housing for the spectrum of different housing needs that we have here in the city.
Okay, so a little bit about, uh, what Councilmember Manki said about framing it in terms of housing choices and, um, rather than just affordable housing. So.
Yeah, I would say like accessibility or attainability, like basically just if, if you want to live here, there's a place for you.
Okay. Okay. So at that level, that would be a, a rewording of the strategic priority.
Yes.
Right, okay. So that, that helps.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, good. That's exactly what I, what we're looking for here, exactly. All right. Anything else on this? Okay. Next, what's the next priority area? Inclusive and equitable service. And there's some things that you'll see sort of come of, come under multiple priority areas and you'll see some of the, you know, like, uh, speed up the permit process, process for underserved populations, um, neighborhood programs, accessible playgrounds, and implementing DEI goals across departments. So that's implementing your DEI study and then a focus on communication staffing. So that would be, uh, reaching out to, um, broader populations and things like that. So I understood it. So what do you think about this one?
Councilmember Manki. Thanks for jumping in early.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I would, um, I would phrase a goal as begin implementation and take meaningful action on the city's DEI plan and build trust in government by developing and implementing a comprehensive communication plan with proactive strategies and systems and a robust, transparent, open, public engagement process. I know that's a lot, so I'm happy to repeat it if I need to.
Okay, so begin, well, one thing here is begin implementation of the DEI and take meaningful actions. Uh, and then you would couple that with a comprehensive, robust communication program that would reach out to more, to more folks. Does that, does that make sense? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, build trust in government by creating comprehensive communications plans with, you know, strategies, tested and proven strategies and systems that make everything we do transparent and open it up to everybody in the city to give and provide feedback. And seek out, seek out the feedback from places where we're, we're not traditionally going to or not traditionally getting, getting it.
Okay, so inclusive community engagement.
And I, I think that includes, you know, communicate early and often. Bringing the community along with us as we move through processes and not have it be, you know, coming up for the first time at a vote or having people come at voting time, give feedback for the first time. Just be proactive in notifications and, and obtain feedback. And I mean, a good example of that, I think, is the, the, uh, ABs that we passed earlier tonight. Um, we did some outreach, but we didn't go, you know, perhaps up to the door and talk to them specifically about it. And it's something that would have been attainable, given that it's just five houses. Um, but we could have, you know, we could have done other things, I think, that have, would sit well with the community and I think would make the homeowners feel good to know that the city came to their house to have a face-to-face conversation. So doing, you know, doing more of that and more, more outreach and engagement.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, along, uh, I'll borrow from Councilmember Manki some things. Uh, I was gonna, before I do that though, I had a question about the, uh, the efficient and effective government. How different is that from this one?
You know, that's, that is a great question. And again, there, they do kind of overlap. And I think you'll see that in a couple of them. And so you know, inclusive and equitable service is about, um, serving everybody equally and bringing all, all the voices to the table. And it has to do with your relationships with people. That's just sort of how I see it. Efficient and effective government, um, also involves open government. And so that would be, are we, are we working efficiently? Are we making, are, are we giving the public the biggest bang for the buck? Are we, um, are we accomplishing what we said we're going to accomplish? Do we do it efficiently and do we accomplish what we say we're going to do? So that's, it's a little bit different and it's more uh, more internally. I, I believe, I just think it's more internally focused on how you do things. Policies and procedures. This is very outward looking to the public. That's just my thought.
Uh, that, I mean, that makes sense. To me, both of them, I mean, if you look at it from, we exist to serve the community. So if you look at it from the community's perspective, you, you can kind of combine those, because if you're looking at it from, if you want to make it, if you want to be inclusive, then you're going to create processes and procedures to be inclusive, you know, for example, internally. So one thing I was, uh, thinking is combining both. Uh, and using words and then borrowing from Councilmember Manki or maybe stealing uh, right now is the word transparent. So I was going to say inclusive, equitable. I was going to add proactive, transparent government um, as the goal, to be an inclusive, equitable, proactive and transparent government, uh, which will naturally feed into creating services as described over here. I would add accessible playgrounds and splash pad perhaps, because things are getting hotter and people leave Bothell to go to, for, to splash pads, so we'd add. But then also adding the government policy that you talk about in the next one, which I don't see. So that's what my, oh, here it is. My, what I would suggest to do, develop, implement by annual budget. So if you are inclusive, equitable, proactive, transparent, then all this stuff listed under efficient and effective government in the agenda packet would feed into this as well. Because the reason why I'm suggesting combining goals is actually have things that are achievable. You know, if you list seven things and then under each one of those things, there's like six or seven things, then you're talking about 49 things and you're not going to get done with anything, you know? So, uh, so minimizing those and maybe even once we get into the objectives, minimizing those objectives, that should make things easier for us to to, to measure success, you know, to measure and achieve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to say that this one, this title is a little squishy to me and I'm not entirely clear on it. Um, and so this conversation, uh, between other council members has been helpful. And, uh, just to build on, I, I don't have anything drafted for you this time. Um, but to build off of what has been said, there are some phrases that I would like to consider being, like, working in in some regard. Um, and so I'd like all ages, all abilities in there. If, see, this is the thing, I can't tell this one apart very well between this one and like, like government service, like, you know, making sure that our government functions properly. Because there are elements of parks in here, there are elements of human services in here. Um, and so I would need to, I think, better understand how this fits into, into our, our overall like city structure. But, so can we just put an asterisk on this one and say, maybe this goal gets worked into other goals, um, or combined, uh, to the Deputy Mayor's point? Um, or at least more clearly defined. But I, I understand this to be about, uh, righting historical wrongs, making sure that access is, uh, possible, like I said, for all ages and all abilities. Um, and, and creating a community where all people feel like they, uh, belong and are valued. And so you said, you know, these are, these are big picture goals and we can get more specific and objectives later.
Yes. So this is, um, so there was a, um, suggestion that we combine the efficient and effective with, um, inclusive and equitable, because they are they're part and parcel of each other. Do you, would, is, is that, are, are you saying that you're agreeing with that?
I am, yeah, because we're talking about services, like city service and government service. And like honestly, the city is both government and services. And so we could combine them, recognize that there is, yes, the city is responsible for like a government feature, but it's also providing, you know, amenities to our community. And, and this one may be more related to amenities. I'm not entirely sure. But because that then bleeds out into parks and human services, I'm not really sure how they connect. Or I guess how this works, how this fits in with all the other priority areas.
So that's, that's great feedback. And actually, if we can, um, the staff can maybe work on bringing some clarity to that. You know, making them a little bit more distinct from each other. So that's great feedback.
So I actually, when I was going through this, I had notes for three different categories that I kind of felt fell under an umbrella of do a good job. And that's, I don't really find them to be big picture goals. Um, and the three that I had were infrastructure. Like, that's how we achieve big picture goals. Like, that's not big picture goals. And I had efficient and effective government, like, do a good job, like, I, I'm in for that. And then also safe and healthy community. Like, this seems to me like a lot of just A, doing a good job, but also a result of the other big picture things. So for me, I would just pull those three. Because I don't think those are big picture priorities. I think they're more of a result or just do a good job. And I, I feel like do a good job is should be assumed. I would, um, I don't really have anything to add on this particular item. Um, I thought the council members that have already spoken have, uh, articulated things really well.
Okay.
And actually, since I'm talking about this, um, if I were to add one, it would be around transportation, around moving people around. That's what I've heard the most complaints about, both running for office and in office um, from our community as a whole, and it's not particularly close in my experience. And transportation is a reason often cited by people that come and give us public comment is a reason to not do some of the other things that are on the list. So, um, my, my suggestion were pull the three that basically say do a good job and add something worded around transportation.
So you're saying, when you say pull, you may combine those under do a good job and?
Yeah, or, or, I mean, I feel like do a good job could just be assumed. Like, I guess I don't think those three need to be, just like big picture priorities for us. Like, I think everybody here wants to do a good job. Like, and I think we can assume that we're going to try to do a good job.
Okay. So remember that one of the things that the staff's trying to get is some direction from council about, because this is going to work into the budget process. And, um, so you're telling them, here are the things we think are important to invest in. Uh, this, we want to see these things resourced. And so that's, that, again, that's sort of what we're trying to do is really get you towards the budget. And so that's good, again, good feedback.
Councilmember Aldrich.
I have a question, um, that I, the intention is to kind of help us resolve some of the, I think, confusion that we might be experiencing here. Can we go back to the lists of pri, the, the list of the seven priorities? So I can reflect on how they, how this one fits in.
There.
Thank you. Okay, can I take a moment, please? Would somebody else like to speak?
Councilmember Manki to the rescue.
I, um, I was also in my mind combining some of these together. I took infrastructure and I changed it to vibrant neighborhoods. And in thinking about what is a vibrant neighborhood, I was thinking about neighborhoods around town that were already actively working on, like the downtown neighborhood. And I started thinking about, you know, completing the cleanups, the property sales and getting things permitted so that downtown can be completed. I know that's on a lot of our minds. I started thinking about critical infrastructure, uh, both for now and for growing. So I started thinking about Bothell Way. You know, the Canyon Park neighborhood and the work that needs to be done there, uh, but also open spaces and community events. We started on the community events, but I think we, we've talked a lot about open spaces and the park at Bothell Landing, a potential dog park, uh, permanent location. Stonefish County is short of parks, our part of the city is short of parks. And then the landscaping, um, lights, things like that for the, the bowl of art and for Main Street. So I, I like to think of it in that way, I guess, instead of infrastructure. And then on the, um, on the safe and healthy community section, I thought about bringing in the support for people in need and including that in there. In talking about, you know, the regional radar program, the north sound mental health facility, um, using modern technology to enhance, um, you know, our, our work with law enforcement and safety, like the school zone, items we discussed and the, the safety, uh, of red light cameras in a couple of different spots. um, items we discussed and the, the safety, uh, of red light cameras in a couple of different spots. Um, things like that. And then that EMS and, and fire department work we know is gonna come in front of us, making sure we have a sustainable and high quality, um, fire service to support our city. So, um, those are the kind of the merges that I, that I had in my mind and um, I didn't wanna jump too far ahead, but I'm glad it, glad it came up. Others were thinking the same way. And with that, I'll toss it back over to, uh, councilmember Alderks. So it looks like she's got her, um, her ideas ready to go.
I only look put together. You might be assuming too much. But thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate those thoughts too. Um. So what I'm seeing here is that service and, you know, like there's policies that we do, like the city does, and then there's like services that the city provides. Um, and, and all of these things can be, uh, sorted into one of those. Um, and I'm seeing that inclusive equitable service, infrastructure for growing community, healthy community. Uh, and efficient and effective government, those are all services. Um, support for people in need, I think is both, uh, policy and services. And because of that, I do believe that there is a way to, uh, combine, combine some of these. Um, and I also, I think, would find this helpful if we, if I could. And I'm, I'm not able to kind of put this together on the fly here, but visualize how each of these things, um, relate to each of these priorities relate to different departments of the city. So if we look at last year's, um, last year's goals and priorities, it was sort of broadly speaking, you know, these are the, these are the things, like, these are like almost the departments of the city, right? Like, and, and so to be able to connect these goals with departments might be helpful. I'm also like riffing right now. So if it doesn't make complete sense, that's why. Um, and so that, that is one of the challenges that I'm seeing here. Um, I, maybe some operating definitions, like I said earlier, would be helpful, um, so that I can kind of tease out the differences. Um. But I, I do think that if we look at services, right, to the point that, uh, the mayor made, we should do a good job on all of the services that we provide. Like we should have a good transportation system and we should have good public safety and we should have good, um, parks and we should have good human services, right? We should, all of those things we should do well. And then what we need to do then is figure out what are the metrics for how we do well on those things? And how do those goals relate in general? And I think honestly, they all relate to a safe and healthy and connected community. Um, seriously, I want to go back and look at my campaign materials because I feel like I had it really well thought out when I was running for office. I would love to have that as a re, a, a reference here, but, um, so I'm just gonna throw those thoughts out there and, and hope that 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 provides something beneficial.
So there's a, one of the things I'm hearing is that there's these sort of overarching values. Um, that you want to reflect in everything that you do, like, you know, good government. Um, you know, doing, you know, doing things well, sort of that overarching values. And then below that, and that's how, that's how you do everything. And then the what you do is, um, here's how we're going to meet these different needs. And then, um, so that I, I can, I can sort of see, I mean, I see what you're saying and I'm trying to think about how to reframe this or reorganize it in a way. I'll work with the city manager to, uh, figure out a way to incorporate all of these. And, um, cause I, I think I see, I see a common thread going. I just can't tie it together right now. Wow. So that's okay. We'll take this and we'll put, we will put your new city manager to the test and see how well he can, uh, interpret this.
Well, and it's a good thing that these meetings are recorded too. You can go back and like, right, what, what was exactly said? We have it on record.
So can, so, so the, coming back to this is to say, we want to, you want to combine, um, some of these things, some of these seem too closely related. Um, and so, um, that's, that's what we can take a look at. So can we go back? Can we go back to the, oh, sorry. This is where we were, right?
Yep. Councilmember Zorns.
Well, I was just gonna say, could we see what we had listed under, um, these other categories? Um, before we start doing a lot of shuffling around.
Okay, that's where I was going. Let's, let's make sure. So infrastructure for a growing community and this is, this is, uh, everything is, cities fundamentally are about infrastructure and about geography and their, you know, physical entities. And so there was a lot of things that you brought up in the retreat process that related to specific, everything specific, like a dog park, a splash pad, spray park to bike infrastructure, bigger idea. Um, Wayne Park study. So it went from the specific to the very general. And so that's what we're gonna try to suss out. But, uh, so for instance, you talked about infrastructure in transportation is a subset of infrastructure. That's one way of looking at it. Um. So I'm trying to figure out how to knit this together. So do you, what, what thoughts do you have about infrastructure? And, um, these are the kinds of things that you talked about.
Councilmember Alderks.
Mayor. Uh, the way I've always sort of put it together, um, when I think about how to, you know, build, uh, like, right, the built environment for a community. Um, that our community is a place where people feel safe to, uh, live, work and play. Um, and, and people don't take play seriously enough, but I wrote a whole master's thesis on play. And I think it's very important and parks are a very necessary part of that, but it's not, it's, it's our open spaces. It's, um, it's our biking infrastructure. It's our sidewalks. It's the ability to move safely throughout our community and be able to feel like we belong there. And that we can connect with people, um, throughout the community as well. Um, and this is where we get into, you know, the ideals of even civilization building in a sense. And, um, but for me, I've always just kind of brought it back to, you know, to live, work and play. Um, and, and we need those amenities. We need that infrastructure, um, all working together to, uh, to, you know, uh, reach those goals. So if that helps.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for bringing this. Uh, this is showing. Oh, when I first read infrastructure, I, the first thought that came to mind is like do, do a good job. I would, I would say like the stuff we take for granted, like roads, you know, running water, sewers working, you know, those things that like we set, we did, us as consumers do not even think about, but the, they are like absolutely necessary for any city to function properly. Uh, then that's for infrastructure. So which includes transportation, includes parks. So combined with efficient, oh, what, what one was it? Inclusive and equitable services, you know? This is where now we are talking about. Here are the government services we offer that are that we're gonna invest in as the community grows, which includes utilities, as mentioned here, you know, roads, sidewalks, bike. I mean, bus infrastructure, other infrastructure, transportation modes that are not even listed here perhaps because we don't know. Maybe ride share, for example, I don't know. Parks, uh, and these things. So, uh, yeah, the, that's what first thought that came to mind when I read this, uh, the word infrastructure for growing communities, like the absolute minimum, uh, not as, the stuff we take for granted as residents, but it's like, it's a lot of work on the backend to make happen, but it's absolutely necessary for us to have a great quality of life. So I, maybe I would also combine this with the find ways to include, uh, combine it with, so there's the government ser, government and government services to cancel another other access point earlier. Like having that as a big lump thing. That's like, you know, bare minimum, and then all the other additional stuff here that we can make permanent, like dog parks and add skate, skate parks and so forth. That makes sense.
Okay.
Councilmember Zorns.
Yeah, I have a statement. Infrastructure that benefits economical, residential, transportation, mental, environmental and physical health, recreating and open space.
So that is, that's a lot of words. Um, infrastructure that benefits.
Economic.
Mm-hmm.
Residential.
Mm-hmm.
Transportation.
Mm-hmm.
Mental, environmental and physical health.
Okay.
Recreating and open space.
Okay, that's a lot. That's what the city does. That's the whole city.
Yeah, but, but, but it covers all those items that you have there.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
And allows them for some flexibility.
I'm gonna contradict something I said just a little bit ago, just to, you know, make things confusing. I almost feel like the strategic priority should be like a who do we want to be? Not necessarily a what do we want to do to get us there? And I feel like we're kind of ping ponging back and forth between those two things. Um. And I don't have it into that sentence.
So I think what you're talking about, and I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Goal statements are what you want to be. That, that's where you sort of focus it and, and where the you started with this was strategic priorities. Um, and it's almost like your goals are bigger than your strategic priorities. Your strategic priorities are what you're gonna put money into, uh, and do if, I don't know if that makes sense, but the goal statements are, to me, are really about your aspirations, what you want to be as a community. So I'm agreeing with you.
And before we move on, um, I missed something earlier that I wanted to say. Um, I like how councilmember Mankey wanted to combine, um, safe and healthy and then support for people in need. Because fundamentally, like keeping people safe from things is providing, I mean, they're, they're very similar. Whether somebody needs to be kept safe from not having enough food or a bad guy. Um, it's the same thing. So like big picture, like a way to word that, um, where we're talking simply about maybe, you know, meeting the needs of residents that like we don't expect them to meet on their own or they can't or something like that. You know, if you have a heart attack and, you know, you're hurting, or if you have a chronic illness and you're hurting, like, uh, I'm, I'm okay with combining those two as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm good with that. I feel, uh, going back to this one. Uh, like what councilmembers on this menu said, and I, made me think, you know, there is a goal that is gonna be evergreen, no matter who the council is in the future, fifty years from now. There's gonna be keep the lights on goal, you know? Cause if it goes into funding, uh, keep the lights on, water running and so on and so forth. Um, so I would, I, I think, uh, that's the, uh, the goal that, uh, you know, that was mentioned, that was the, the long one. Which is a comprehensive and incorporates all those things that we want our city to, to provide. So there's the keep the lights on. And then there's like the additional thing, like if you want mental health and, and physical health type aspects, which is parks, you know? Uh, adding that into here. Um, as part of that. So this, my point is that this is going to be something that we're just gonna stay here for, forever, you know? Um, cause this is, again, this is like that absolute bare minimum that a city can provide, should provide for have a good quality of life for the city. The other points when we get to them, the other
Okay.
Goals.
Okay. You wanna move on to the next thing and just to confuse the things a little bit more?
Sounds good.
Okay, so this is one where I frankly, I struggled with a little bit because there was two sorts, safe and healthy were covered in two different areas. And so one was really parks related and the other one was really public safety. And so, you know, do you want to comblock, combine safe and healthy? Um, do those connect enough and do they each, or do they get enough priority being lumped together? And that I, I also hear you saying that they're getting, they maybe could get combined in different ways. Uh, but how do you, how do you see safe community versus healthy community? Are they one in the same?
Councilmember Alderks.
Uh, thank you for that question, Marilyn. I think it's a good one. And sort of to my point about, um, like the difference between like service and infrastructure. Um, like half of this list is sort of infrastructure related, right? Parks, parks, maintenance, recreation, right? And so the, all of those things could probably move over into the, the inclusive communities and then, or the infrastructure or the, if they're to, those two are combined together so that we could really focus on, on like this could be public. This could be more of public safety related. Um, and recognizing that our, um, that our human services likely fall into this category as well. Um, and recognize that there is a, a kind of a spectrum of, of need in our community that, uh, that I think for the first time in, in almost history of, in our country, even we are starting to see that um, police can't do all that they're, you know, they're, they're not the social workers. They're not the, the crisis response. Um, and so we can, um, connect this to the work of our human services committee and our local human services agencies. Um, the work that our chief of police is doing in terms of getting the, uh, crisis response center and put all of that in here and, and know that that means then we need to have a comprehensive uh, crisis response plan for our city. And that doesn't just include when crime happens, but that also includes when poor health happens, when, um, when, you know, mental health challenges happens, when economic challenges happens and when people are in crisis. Um, so if that can work, I would love to hear what my council members and my colleagues have to say.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Uh, I agree. There is, uh, infrastructure things here that we can move out of this into the other one, like parks and park maintenance. Again, like the bare minimum a city can provide, should provide, like the stuff we take for granted. And there is a spectrum of public safety, which is, you know, police having to deal with that, you know, the bad guys. And then there's, um, you know, um, uh, safety and health where police have to deal with the bad guys to keep us mentally uh, safe. And then also there's radar on the other end of the spectrum where there's not always required. Uh, there's a, a, a medical response is, uh, more effective in certain situations than, you know, an armed response. So, um, I agree. Uh, and, you know, we talk about oversight here and then obviously fire is mentioned, says regionalization, but that's a topic we need to consider also. Is that a, the question is that? Um, so that's another topic we have to consider also. So I, I agree with, uh, the councilmember Alderks on separating, you know, for example, parks from a more holistic crisis response. Um, sorry, it's late. So I'm like, my words are are escaping me. So a more comprehensive crisis response, there it is.
Yeah. So that, and, and I, I will say again that the level of detail in some of these are just so different. Um, some of them are really specific, do this thing. Some of them are be this, and some of them are, you know, strive for this. And so it's, I think, I think that's what is probably you're struggling with and, and that's okay, that you're, that's a good conversation. I, I just wanted to say, this may seem like a crazy circular conversation, but if, I think, um, it's helpful. He had some great ideas about that, and that you've talked about kind of where aspirationally you wanted the community to be. How you organize that around your services is sort of the next level down. So.
Councilmember Manke.
I just wanted to throw my support behind everything that was just discussed. I talked about it a little bit earlier, so I won't rehash what I said already, but I think the, the parks and the infrastructure items can go to the other item, and then this could be focused on that. You know, the regional radar, the north-south mental health facility. Police and fire, essentially, the things that we need to look at over the next couple of years.
Okay. And does that include services of support for people in need? Maybe?
In my, in my mind, it does. In my mind, the radar, the regional radar and crisis assistance, and then the mental health facility goes along with that. It's all kind of together, and it's assigning the right people to the right type of call and the right type of, of need for that, that resident in our community.
Okay.
I agree with all of that. I, yeah, the, the safety and the support for people in need, I'm all on board. The, one of the things that I've like struggled to figure out how to articulate that some of these are under is like, I just want Bothell to be a fun place to live. I just, I want to do cool stuff. Like, I want to do the kind of things that other people are like, hey, I wish our city did this. Like, and I think my earlier idea of transportation being one of the goals upon reflection was terrible. But if we had something, you know, councilmember Aldrichs mentioned earlier, play and recreation and kind of how we we don't really do that or prioritize that as adults, but just something around, like, fun, like, doing cool stuff, like, somebody's gonna have to wordsmith that a little bit because that ain't it. But but I feel like some of the, you know, healthy community stuff could go underneath a budget or a line item or a goal or a priority, whatever we're calling it, like that.
So it's about enriching lives in, in a lot of different ways?
Yeah, the, the kind of things that feed your soul, like, and I think parks can go under that and community events can go under that. You know, the kind of things that make you go to bed with a smile on your face.
Okay.
I know that's totally vague, but I'd like to be the kind of city that has that sort of thing. Councilmember Manke.
I just wanted to add, I think there's additional value in that, in getting out and getting interaction with your neighbors and your community, getting to know people both that, you know, live near you and don't live near you in the city, and talking about, and getting to know different cultures and, and things like that. I know in my neighborhood, we all know each other, and so if there's an emergency, I know who to go to for certain things, and I know who is elderly and who needs to be checked on. I know who's got kids and, and all those types of things. And I think it really helps when there are problems, or maybe there's not problems, maybe it's just, you know, you're gonna have a party and you want to invite some people over, you have a bonfire in your backyard, or or whatever it may be, you're gonna get a food truck for the neighborhood. It just helps to know your neighbors and helps to have that interaction, and that's what community is. That's what near, strong neighborhoods are, is getting to know those people that live around you and, and be able to assist when you can assist and ask for help when needed, ask for help. All of those things that we generally don't talk about, I think, in government because we're so focused on executing the things that need to be executed, but I, I like that we're thinking about those types of things. Especially with these events that we're doing this summer, that's getting everybody together, and I think that's just the start of what we could be doing.
Deputy Mayor.
I agree. I forgot what I was gonna say, so. But I agree with everything councilmember Manke says, because I was, see, I was listening to him.
Councilmember Aldrichs.
I could sort of synthesize what I've heard councilmember Manke and Mayor Thompson say, and I guess deputy mayor agreed to that that the arts and culture piece is actually, is very big. It's, it is part of the thing that makes Bothell a fun place to be. That's one of the reasons why, I'm just gonna include this. Recently, somebody asked, what's your favorite street in Seattle? And a response on social media was Main Street in Bothell. And like, that is an indication that, that we are, we are winning whatever made up, like, competition there is between us and Seattle for being a fun place to be. And that, that's just really touching, in my humble opinion. So I, but to that point, I would like to see arts and culture moved in the community markets, the community events moved into the services. Because those are things that we do. Those are things that we, like, share with the community. That's how we connect people or connect with people, and then, but that's separate from infrastructure. So something, looks like we actually have three groupings in this list here. We have, like, public safety, crisis response. We have service related to arts, culture, community, and then we also have infrastructure in terms of parks and open space.
Councilmember Zornz.
Yeah, I don't think this is the place to toss out an additional goal, but a few of you may remember crusade that I've been on about building neighborhood autonomy and encouraging neighborhood pride and touching on what councilmember Manke was saying about being able to be available with each other for crisis. And I think at some point, not, not this year, but I think it would be worthy for Bothell to consider on a, a goal that is focused in on building neighborhood strength. And that includes, you know, issues like emerging, setting up an emergency system and that sort of thing. So if that's something that we can noodle around in the back of our mind and, and think about addressing later, I think that would be a fantastic goal for the city.
So I, do, do, does Bothell have a search program? Community employee response, our community emergency response teams? Okay, so that kind of thing, it kind of gets to that kind of thing?
Yes, that, and we, we passed being able to allow neighborhoods to put signage that identifies them as a specific neighbor. You know, a sign blade, that's on the books now. But, you know, there's all kinds of pieces, you know? Parks that are walkable. All those things that help build up neighborhood cohesiveness. But I, I, like I said, I think that's muddying the waters and making it more complicated for what we need to do now. But I think it'd be something that would be a worthy goal for Bothell to be more purposeful down the road with.
Councilmember Aldrichs.
And to just build off of councilmember Zornz's idea for neighborhoods. I would suggest that that relates to the culture, community piece, and would move over to the, this, what we're calling services. So, that to me is more of an objective. Like a potential proposal, policy, or, you know, a proposal that could be implemented underneath a goal because it serves to, to address a goal. And so, like, definitely, you know, especially as we're brainstorming, keep everything and, and so, but for our own organization. If you could put that over in the, like, the arts, culture, community piece in services. Hopefully that makes sense.
So the neighborhoods piece, pulling the neighborhoods together with that. Is that what you said? Okay.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for following.
Just trying, okay. Are you ready, Mayor? What do you, do, do you have your?
I'm good. I've said plenty.
Okay. Support for people in need, talking about combining this with safe and healthy?
It's just safe.
Safe, okay.
And then have healthy be like the parks things? I don't know. We could call it safe and healthy. Although we, if we pulled the parks things out into something else, I guess, calling it safe and healthy is fine.
Okay. So this would just be combined, these kinds of things would be combined under safe and healthy? All right. Okay, efficient and effective government, talked about combining this way back when. With, this is kind of, sort of, this is how we do things as, as an organization. We are efficient, we are effective, we are, you know? This is kind of a, more of a value than anything. But there's some elements in here around open government, communications, outreach and things like that that can get captured in other places. Is that what you were, were going with that?
Deputy Mayor.
I, I suggested earlier to combine this with the inclusive. Those things, those, what's listed here are tactics. Wouldn't even call them objectives. They're like, you know, tasks that need to be done to do certain things. Like, open government, maybe that's one higher level thing, but like hiring ELT, you know? People, ELT team members, I just used T twice. Empiders, you know, hiring staff, you know, that seems like more tactical, not a objective, like to accomplish an objective, which is transparency and inclusiveness. And maybe there's some revenue generation ideas over here as well. So, yeah, those things, this one was probably not a standalone thing, it doesn't seem to me.
So one of the things that I was looking for was, because some of these are very specific, like asset replacement, and it has to do with responsible, you know, stewardship of public funds. Financial planning, because you all, it was very important to you that you keep the city on a sound financial basis, and that you, you know, look to the future and create a sustainable financial plan. And I, I couldn't really, this is the only place I could think to fit it in. Is that, but what do you think about that?
Yeah, there's the financial aspect of it, I guess. Yeah, I hear you. I mean, some of those things, like the hiring, maybe we can take that.
Right, that's, that's just a to-do.
Yeah, they are, the open government, financial fiscal responsibility, I guess, to use that, that phrase, is a to, I guess, maintain basing the budget. Remember how I mentioned this evergreen thing? We, we called it infrastructure earlier, but that could be even at a higher level. It's like, you keep the water on, you keep the electricity on, you balance your books, you know?
Right.
So that's
The basics.
That could, those things that we take for granted, but a lot of work on the backend that require support, obviously, staff and all that. But those things that, like, we absolutely have to do, otherwise we don't have a city, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Manke.
I had two ideas written down for this one. One of them was budget-related. Establishing, you know, a long-range financial strategy, including options for you know, future operating and capital needs of the city, you know, including surprises. I know the CPI being high is not a surprise to us at this point. We, we all saw that coming, but we don't know what the future's gonna hold, so having those charts that were presented to us, I think it was at the budget meeting where there were the three scenarios of maintaining, increasing, and I can't remember what the other one was, but having an idea of what those are, so we're aware of it before it happens, and we can be thinking about it in advance, I think, is a positive thing to have and could be included here. And then the other one is just around efficiency, and I call that high-performance government, but it's, it's more of identifying and creating systems that are efficient, and, you know, some of that lean six sigma process improvement, if you can find waste in the system, eliminate the waste, eliminate the non-value-added items if you can, and use technology really, if it's appropriate, to enhance the services we're providing and, and serving our community in that way. So those were the only two things that I really had under this section.
Councilmember Aldrichs.
Let me push all the right buttons. I'd like to see these moved over, right, that, that, that the city is government and that is a service. So, into the, the service category as well. And, and this is, you know, basically, all of these can be encapsulated in, in good, inclusive, responsible government. And we can have objectives underneath that. Maybe there's, maybe it is a sub-goal. Sometimes you have, you know, kind of categories within a broader overarching goal. And so, we want our city to run well and serve our residents well. And, and do that in an equitable and comprehensive way. So, I would put that out as, as some wording for the overarching goal there.
I think that this category seems more like Kyle's category than our category. It seems more executiony than big-picture goal. I would suggest, like, I mean, I, I was probably one of the people that wrote something about long-term financial sustainability. And if that is the piece that really came through, why don't we make that the goal? And there's a host of things we can do underneath there. I mean, I know that building a city that is financially sustainable over the long term is super important to me. We have the urban three data coming soon. I mean, and, and this one, like, to accomplish a lot of the other things that we talked about tonight, you have to be solvent. And if we're not on a path to be solvent in the next decade or two, then everything else just turns into scrambling to be solvent. So, like, I'd, I'd rather see that be a goal than, like, again, efficient and effective government seems to me to be just sort of do a good job, and yeah, we should, but I don't necessarily think that needs to be a strategic priority. Councilmember Aldrichs.
If you don't mind me double-dipping and just echoing what you're saying, our last year's goals and priorities did include focus on long-term financial stability. And, and I do think it would be appropriate to bring that back because there are some long-term challenges that still need to be worked through in our community. And, and to the mayor's point that, that it's a, there are several strategies that we should be pursuing in order to accomplish that goal. So I would, I would also, I would second the recommendation to create that as a separate goal.
Okay. Okay, just, does your brain hurt now? Are you, we've made it through all of these things. And actually, it was you know, you're thinking big picture, and that's where, you know, that where the council does the best for, for the community. So it probably felt a little bit rambling and a little bit here and there. And so, that's for staff to bring back and to make some, something cohesive and coherent out of it. So that might be some goal statements. I come back to council, let you take another look at those. Staff can begin thinking about objectives, but those kind of come later. Because, but there are, from that come budget proposals, and then that's what this is about. It's about what sort of budget proposals are going to be incorporated in the proposed budget to help move these different goals along. And then, once you get the preliminary budget to that, from the city manager to the council, and the public gets involved, and you know, one of the things I heard you say was we want to include the public. And so, you know, the one option you always have is to do public hearings for budgets, and that's not that effective of a, a way to involve the public in something as important and massive as this. So you know, having a community engagement plan, I mean, you Um, you know, having a community engagement plan, I mean, you had the survey. Now you need to touch base with them again, the public about, so what do you want to see in this budget or what do you think about this budget? So, you know, having some kind of a, a community engagement strategy specifically around the budget so that you can. You know, get all those things in there. And then you can adopt the budget, which the city manager said, of course, you have to adopt a budget by the end of the year. If you need to make changes to it, you can, you can amend your budget, but you have to get most of it in place so that the government can continue operating. Uh, on January first, just like the federal government. So, um, anyplace else you want to go with this? Are you tired? That's okay if you're tired.
Uh, I'm tired, I have a question. Um, the, uh, public, um. Uh, feedback process, is that something? And I, I completely agree hearings are not public hearings on this for, for, I mean, we can see not many people attend. How do we make that something that, uh, we can solicit more? Cause we had a big discussion around that when we were discussing the survey back in April, right? How, uh, people self-select into, because for whatever reason, you know? So, and we only get a certain kind of feedback, we don't get more holistic kind of feedback. So how do we, is this something we can partner with staff on, or is that something you have to snoodle on and? And come back to us to talk, uh, in more detail about, or what are your thoughts around that?
City manager, maybe, do you have? Some thoughts, you must have a thought.
I'm gonna try and get out of, out of share mode here and. Um, Deputy Mayor, with apologies if you, if you could restate that.
Yeah, no problem. I was asking in, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, that you. Uh, as the next steps were listed, there's, you know, uh, objectives and then. We will review this again, uh, but we will also solicit public feedback. Uh, and, uh, something I agree with Marilyn on that having public hearings is not that right. It's not the most effective thing to do. I know that's the thing that's usually done, but it's not the most of it. How do we? Uh, ensure that we get a more comprehensive feedback process going?
Got it, yeah, thank you, you know, and that's one of the things that, um. Haven't had an opportunity to put that fully together. Uh, I mentioned, you know, this week, before the week is over, we'll be. Uh, working at a more comprehensive budget schedule, which I think is a big piece of that, of course, we have to be able to say, here's what we intend to do. Um, and then, uh, I also will be meeting with our interim assistant city manager, our communications officer. To be working out what are the opportunities that we have, so there are definitely, um, some strategies we can have around. Community event, events and involvement, or how we post things on our webpage and solicit for feedback and. I do recall back to, um, you and, uh, our meeting in April where there was some. Uh, interest expressed from one or two of you around using some community engagement software, being able to get up and down, so. We need to put together a strategy on that, but, um, I think, uh, wholeheartedly agree. I think budget public hearings are an important step, um, and you do hear things, um, from that, but. At the same time, often, by the time a public hearing is happening, you know, the budget is getting within weeks of being completed, much like our conversation earlier tonight. It is, um, always in our best interest to be asking for feedback before something feels almost done. So we'll be, um, we'll be working on that for sure, and I'll, I'll try and have a better answer for you when we come back from the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Aldrich.
My question is, um, also in, along the lines of, of, uh, strategies of, of community engagement. And one of the strategies that I use, I've talked about it before in these meetings. Is that I send out a weekly newsletter to members of the community, and so I'm wondering. Um, at what point will we get like a summary of, of these, you know, or. Like what, what's the timeframe for drafting and completing polishing what we've. Kind of thrown at you tonight, that sort of mess and tangle of words, um, that you'll be working through. Um, I, I'd like to see it come back to us in some sort of polished way. Uh, for approval perhaps, so that I can then share what we've come up with from our community. And, uh, or to the community in my, in newsletters and in other community engagement formats. Um, so that we can know, like, you know, we, I won't say that we're in an ivory tower. Because we're in our homes, most of us, um, but we, we are a, a group here, but, you know, creative. Can create our own echo chamber, so let's take what we've said here to our community and give them feedback. Or give them, you know, I wanna, I wanna be able to hear from them, um, and be able to post that in a public way. So that we can get, you know, calls, emails, um, we can have, you know, this be a topic of our, of our office hours, um, when people reach out to us. Um, and, yeah, so what is that timeframe and when would we expect to see? A draft that we've been approved to share with, uh, the community?
On the next steps that Marilyn presented, um, the intent is to come back to the meeting in July on the nineteenth. To be able to have that adoption. In terms of if it's possible to circulate a draft earlier and that, I'll have to, um, Marilyn and I will have to touch bases. Tomorrow and see, um, what kind of magic she has in terms of the timing. Um, cause I can certainly anticipate that there'd be some desire to have it in hands before. You know, the, the week before, or the Friday before, when it's published in the agenda, that, let's see what we can do.
Magic, uh, magic, um, I, I charge more for magic.
Good, magic should be on a premium.
Sustainably funded magic.
There you go.
Uh, that, that, that plan sounds very workable, um, I, I'm not trying to make anybody. Jump, jump too high, um, or too fast, so a, you know. A, a draft of these in the agenda ahead of the, uh, meeting on the nineteenth is, is perfectly reasonable and, and does give us an opportunity to. To, um, to share those ideas with the community and get feedback before that meeting, um, so yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you for ha- having me back again and it'll all make sense very soon. Um, I'll, uh, do whatever I can to help the city manager, um, make sense of it. I took a lot of notes.
Well, thank you so much for your time, Marilyn, we appreciate it, and we're looking forward to the next conversation, the next evolution of this process.
Okay.
All right, next up on our agenda, we have council conversations.
Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to jump in and say, um, got to attend the AWC conference last week. And it was a great, uh, great session, I highly recommend it. If anybody here hasn't been to one, uh, this annual conference, it, it'll be next year, I think, over in Spokane, but it's essentially. Um, I don't know, more or less two full days and then two partial days of. Time networking with other, um, city elected officials, listening to various speakers. Um, learning about various elements of city government, there's tracks in DEI, there's tracks in. Um, in legal matters, there's tracks in social media, so learn quite a, of. Variety of things, uh, at this meeting, it also helps you if you're going for that certificate of municipal leadership that AWC offers. Um, it's just thirty credits of work to get that, so I recommend everybody do that as well. I didn't really know much about it, I think I heard them talk about it when we were first onboarded as new council members and. Didn't give it a second thought until this conference and saw the kind of the value that comes out of that in continuing education as an elected leader and. Um, so I would, I highly recommend everybody take a look at that if you haven't already, uh, but. Next year, if you're up for it, consider going, I'll be going back again for sure, and, um, it's amazing how many. Elected officials are, are out there, how many cities are out there in our state, and each one is very different, so you get to chat with people who. Think along the same lines as you and people who don't think along the same lines as you, and you get to share ideas and. Find out what everybody's doing and it's just a, it's a great experience, I'm, I'm really glad I went and, um, just wanted to put a plug in for that.
It said, it sounds like a lot of fun. Councilmembers Zorns.
Yeah, I was a pitiful case last week, cause I had planned to go to AWC and. Someone shared, shared a bug with me and I knew I would. AWC had locked the doors and not let me in, but, um. It is really worth going to and Deanna Dawson's now heading that up, so. Um, a lot of good people there, so yeah, what Ben said, go. Um, the other thing is, is that I got a call, a conversation with. A constituent who's concerned that they're already hearing firecrackers. And wondering how much that we're putting out there on news on, you know, what our new fireworks standards are. And I've had some con- a conver- uh, email dialogue with our, uh, city manager on that, so. Um, anytime you can drop a hint about what the new regs are, what you can and can't do, that would be great. And then the other thing is, uh, I also got a call from someone. Who's impacted in an entirely different construction zone where construction workers are. Parking and taking up residential parking. And, um, so I don't know, I'm gonna, uh, have a, see what we have as far as, um. On the city code on whether or not that's something that we require out of developers to provide parking for their construction. Workers, but it's a grow, it's a growing problem and, um, you may be hearing from some constituents as well. Other than that, I hope everybody has a fantastic fourth and hopefully we'll see most of you on the fourth. Anybody going to pancake breakfast?
I'll be there.
They got me at pancakes, so.
Yes. And free coffee.
I was told there was a table to sit at and answer questions.
Yep, yeah, it'll be great.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be attending as well and hopefully, uh, be able to, to join the long awaited parade again. I have a couple of little ones that, uh, that have been waiting for that for a long time. Not so little anymore, though.
I was gonna say, it's like, I don't think that I appreciate you saying they're little.
That's how you can tell they're not little anymore, is when they start to get offended when you call them little. Um, I've got two things, number one, um, I, uh, asked, uh, city manager a question earlier. Uh, when it was James' time to talk and I just wanted to apologize, Councilmember McNeil, that certainly wasn't, uh, my intent at all. That was a, a mistake, call it an ADHD moment, so, uh, please forgive me for that.
Um, thank you.
And the second thing, um, I saw our neighbors in Kinnmore, um, recently did a proclamation. Um, encouraging our federal electeds to codify Roe versus Wade in law. And we do proclamations a little different here and I could just do that, but, um. I thought it would have more oomph and more value coming from the council as a whole. Um, so I would just wanted to explore the idea of, um, you know, uh. I guess a council statement or something like that, supporting Roe versus Wade. And, um, and again, encouraging our federal elects to work toward, uh, codifying that in law.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Um, I do know that statements from city councils, um, on, on. Of, on topics of national importance that relate, you know, very personally to, um, our community members' lives. Um, can be powerful and the more cities that do it, um, the more we're able to, to send that message as. Um, and, and represent the, the constituents that, with that we represent. Um, I am aware that two-thirds of Americans support. Uh, legalizing and protecting the, the right to be able to have reproductive health and reproductive choice. Um, so I, I think that we would be. Doing something that would have broad support from our community if we were to, um, to do that, and so I'd love to hear from other council members as well.
Deputy Mayor.
Uh, my, uh, so as you all might remember, my, I had my. My eldest, she's eighteen, my middle one, she's fifteen, and so they're high school, when I graduated high school, I thought they were really angry. I feel like, uh, this would be, uh, a step to show them that. Uh, the city cares, you know, um, uh, care. Uh, about their rights, so, um, I'll, I'll be supportive of this as well.
Councilmember Zorns.
Well, I wish I had some time to prepare my thoughts on this, um. Abortion is something that has hit my family, uh, multiple times, so it's very, it's very personal. Um. And I think when you look at the data on a national level. Most people, I think eighty percent support abortion, but they don't support unrestricted abortion. And, um, I think therein lies the rub, most people want, don't want abortion after. When they're surveyed, wanted after twelve to fifteen weeks. I will tell you that for me personally, I understand being in a pregnancy that you did not plan. Um, for whatever reason I know is a, uh. It turns your world upside down. But for me personally, there are some places that should be safe. Classroom should be safe, home should be safe, and for me personally, the womb should be safe. And so I personally could not sign in on, in on that, now when someone needs to make that decision. That's be- that's between, that's, that's on them. Um, but I personally could not sign in on that, because I have very personal feelings about protecting those who cannot protect themselves.
Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, so with this topic specifically, this is something I actually got asked about this while campaigning. Interestingly enough, even though it's not a city council issue or related to any kind of legislative actions that we have as a council. Um, so it's definitely something that's on the minds of everybody, especially now, given the Supreme Court, um, ruling. I know that the majority of Americans are in favor of it, um, but as Councilmember Aldrich stated, there are a third. Of Americans that are not in favor of it, it's very divisive and. There are reasons on both sides for why each feels the way that they do, and I respect. The feelings of everybody and their right to have those feelings. Um, I personally and my family, um, we were big givers and supporters of organizations that. Help, um, families of unexpected, you know, who get pregnant unexpectedly, support their, um. Their pregnancies if they want to, um, they give free medical care, they come alongside and mentor mothers and fathers and. Provide, you know, formula, diapers and, and walk with people in those unexpected moments and provide support. So personally, that's, that's where I stand, I like, I like to see support, um, a supportive environment and I understand it's also. Split in different states, our state does, uh, permit abortions and that's our state's prerogative to do so. Um, it is a state-by-state case at this point, but rather than divide our community by, you know, proclaiming a position on it. Um, that's not ours to proclaim as a city council, um, I would not be in favor of that. I, I want everybody to heal and be able to move forward and. Right now it's a pretty raw time and I don't, I wouldn't want to be a part of any kind of. Statement or collective action as council to further divide our city, so that's, that's my personal position on it and. Um, I'll go ahead and yield the floor, cause I see Councilmember McNeil has his hand up.
Yeah, Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I'll just echo the comments of Councilmember Manki and. Um, Councilmember Zorns, I'd also say that, um. I would agree with it, it, the national narrative is, you know, two-thirds versus one-third. Um, and it is a very divisive topic, and I, I believe that. We as leaders within our community need to listen to our community, um, not just the national narrative, but also community right here at home, and I think that. For us to take a stance on this without having an opportunity to, to hear from more members of our community, I think would. Be, to me, would be somewhat divisive. Um, and so I, I think the, taking the opportunity to say how we, we feel as individuals. Um, I think would be, would be good, um, but to take a stance as a council on this. At this time without having a more of a robust conversation, um, and without hearing from members of our community. without having a more of a robust conversation and without hearing from members of our community, I think would be, would be going out, I think, a little too soon. So I, I would love to continue the conversation. I, I would love to hear from more members of our community on how they feel about it. I have my personal feelings on it. You know, I believe in a woman's rights, pro-choice, but that's just, that's me personally. But again, I'm here to represent the community and I want to ensure that I'm listening to them as well.
Thank you, everybody, for weighing in. Do we have any other topics on the agenda for the evening? Councilmember Aldrichs.
I know that Fourth of July is bright on our horizon and that's what's coming up next. But I also just want to say that Summer Nights in Bothell are going to be starting in less than two weeks, or almost two weeks, and I'm very excited about that. And so we're going to have a fun time in Bothell this summer. And that reminds me of the heat that we experienced over the last couple of days and how we can likely expect a couple more runs of hot weather in the city over, over the next couple of months. And, you know, we may be able to, I, I wonder about how, you know, heat is going to affect attendance. If, if we have, you know, hopefully there will never be another heat dome in this area, but if something like that extreme weather were to happen, or, you know, wildfire smoke, how, how the Summer Night events are going to adapt to high heat and, and smoke. But also our community will have need of cooling centers. And so I, I did send a proposal to city manager Standard, asking for a, a way to codify when we will open, when we'll open cooling centers. And so I would like to propose that we connect it to a national, like, Weather Service Heat Advisory. So if there's going to be a heat advisory for Bothell or a smoke advisory for Bothell, that we would say, okay, well, there it is. That's the criteria we need to meet in order to open a cooling center. And so I would love to hear thoughts from my colleagues on that.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes. Oh, will we vote in our body? So I'm in. I mean, there are people who require, it gets really hot, even with the air conditioning. Our homes were not even built to have, to rig, have air conditioners built in, you know, unless you build it from scratch and design it, so it bends from the top and all. So people get hot, the more vulnerable, you know, who need a place to be cool, need a place to be cool. And what better place than having a public building, you know, that serves the public in the, the time of need. So.
Councilmember Manki.
Yes, I fully support cooling centers as well. I know that we do have one in town. The library is, is designated as a cooling center, but their hours are very limited right now. And I don't know when those will be expanded. And I, I don't think they expand them during heat waves. So I'd be very supportive of having a local cooling center, whether that's helping the library stay open longer or bringing it into City Hall and having it, having it there instead, or having dual cooling centers. But I think we should definitely connect with our regional partners and make sure we're offering what we need to offer to our, our residents.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes, I would, I would agree. I actually have an air conditioner. It doesn't work. Can't get a technician for probably two weeks to come out. And had to go to the movies in order to stay cool for an evening. So definitely agree with cooling centers. I think having the opportunity for members of our community who are vulnerable to have that available to them, I think would be, would be huge. So thank you.
Councilmember Zornz.
Well, I'm just sitting there thinking, I was looking at Councilmember Manki's backdrop thinking, that would be a great place for a splash pad or set up sprinklers. So nothing like a few hot days to push up the timetable where we all look forward to getting a splash pad at some point.
It's a good idea. I mean, there's plumbing and water right there. Is there any way we can do like a quick, like, tactical urbanism, simple splash pad that's like a pop-up when it gets over, say, 85 degrees?
I suspect Paul will weigh in on.
Liability.
Liability.
Yeah.
Put it on the grassy side.
Yeah, or the fountain itself could be a thing, you know.
Kyle's over here like, guys, it's my first meeting. Chill.
I know.
I think that's the problem. It's hot. We can't chill.
We're trying to chill.
Well, I'm looking forward to seeing you guys all on the fourth. It'll be great. Oh, James has something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to say this conversation just kind of resonated with me as, as it, you know, the temperatures rise and we're fighting the 90s. We have a lot more of our youth and people in general swimming in our waters around here. And our waters have not had a chance to warm up quickly yet. And so I think there was a drowning here not too long ago of a 13-year-old in a northern city close to us here. I think it's important that we, we continue to talk awareness around, you know, kids, youth, or anyone just going into the water and ensuring that, that we're being safe. And you always have somebody with you and/or your life jackets or whatever, especially in these waters around here on Lake Washington. I think it's critically important. As things heat up, the more people get out and they're swimming, especially our youth that are vulnerable. And we want to ensure that we don't have any more of those tragedies.
It's council conversations, guys. Just talk. I don't want to have to call on everybody.
Fine. Thank you. Yeah, to Councilmember McNeil's point, there was, there was actually a drowning of a four-year-old in Everett over the weekend. And so, you know, the, the next tragedy is always just, you know, a moment away when, when we live in community with one another and when we, you know, are aware of, of all of us. And so absolutely the opera, you know, making sure that, that swimming lessons are not a, a privilege of the, of the wealthy and the few, but are accessible and available to all ages, and that we can provide water safety education and, and, you know, life, like, safety jackets as well, and making sure that, that we as a community are promoting safe, you know, water recreation. And that, that one is personal to me because I, there is an uncle that I will never know and I have never known because he drowned at the age of six in a water recreation accident. So I'm grateful that Councilmember McNeil brought this up to me.
I'm not sure if it's an official program, but I know our fire department practices with water rescue and water rescue training. I think they had a, a session down at Bothell Landing just a couple of weeks ago. So I don't know if, if city manager, if they would be able to provide any kind of training, you know, once a year or maybe a couple of times a year, the summer. But that could be a good opportunity for us to interact and engage with the community and give that much, much needed safety information out and make sure people are prepared for what they're facing, especially when we have late snowmelt like this year where the water is not warmed up to its typical temperature and it, you can get, you can get in cold shock pretty quick.
I'm gonna ask a silly question. Life preservers, flotation devices, there's, is there a way to test them as to whether or not they still are usable? Because it would be great to have a bin where people's kids have grown out of life preservers or life jackets and, you know, members of the community could just come and help themselves to life jackets. Anybody know about PDFs?
I'm not familiar with anything like that, no.
Or PFDs, personal flotation, PFDs, yeah.
I definitely know what they are. And I, I, I actually never considered what the, like, breakdown in life cycle of one of those is, right? Sort of like car seats for kids, like for little ones, that they only last so long and you have to replace them after a certain number of years. And, and so I think that that would be, you know, good public education. If somebody in our community knows, maybe we would all be better parents if you could inform your city council about that and we could share that with our community.
Yeah, I'll do some homework and see on, you know, what, because you don't want to be guilt, I don't, we, you, we, I don't want to be guilty of circulating a bad flotation device. But if people have surplus and we're willing to share, that would be great.
Can I just say that kills me about car seats? That's it.
Car seats are just like awful to install and have to deal with to begin with. Like grateful for them. They are lifesaving, yes. But if we get, I, I was the public transportation baby wearing type. So if I could keep a kid out of a car seat, I would.
I'm into it. All right, everyone. Thanks for the conversation. Thanks for the council meeting. City manager, thanks for being here. We appreciate it. And I think we can call it a meeting now.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you. Good night.